So, we're saying, well, we can make it lighter than Route 35. And to the road, they'll just make it lighter there. Just track traffic in 35, we can build a chapel of hills behind it. And drive to the school. I just, everyone does it.
Good evening, for the record, Mark Paul Castro. We have our final witness, Mr. Chairman, Carl Panty, our traffic engineer.
My name is Paul Allen Panty, Peter P H N A.
You're president?
Ninety-nine, Lennox Drive, Goren, New Jersey.
Two years, we're here. We're about to do the work two, three, four years from now.
I know. Yeah, for the record, Vice President, Langan Engineering, Environmental Services. I am a registered professional in the state of New Jersey, as well as several other states. My area of expertise is traffic engineering, and I've been practicing for about thirty-five years. I advocate for this award. On this particular project, I've been a contractor, a traffic guy, and a permanent project designer, and a design engineer. So, just to lay a little foundation and background on this project and my knowledge of what I did in the project, I've been aware of and involved in planning for various aspects of this property, probably since eighteen eighty, with regard to this particular project and actively involved since two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen, when the initial traffic planning exercises were initiated and our permit applications with the Department of Transportation were started. The application that's before you this evening is part of redevelopment plan, is a formal application. You've heard prior testimonials regarding the design of the project and its performance with the redevelopment regulations. And with regard to the off-site improvements that result from that, the regulatory agency that is primarily involved is the Department of Transportation. Department of Transportation also has a very specific regulatory process that includes performance criteria that must be met and established to department satisfaction to be able to issue permits. Before you this evening, I am going to present to you a summary of what we're proposing to do, how the traffic will be handled, and any improvements. But at the outset of that, one of the benefits I have been here this evening, at such a late period of time, the thing is that we come to you this evening not with a concept, not with a, these are the improvements that we intend to do, but with a, these are the improvements that have been permitted for construction by the Department of Transportation. We have access permit, we have developers in place with the department, and plans have embedded completely designed in accordance with the department standards. So, I do have the advantage of being able to provide some assurance for this evening, as Richard explained to you, that it will be built as described. So, the application has included a traffic study that was submitted with the application, revised February tenth, two thousand sixteen. It is a piece of larger studies that have been prepared and submitted to regulatory agencies. This is a traffic study that was submitted with border presses, access, and circulation to the site, and has been prepared in accordance with industry standards. Generally, preparation of the traffic study, for those behind me and the public that may not be aware, what we do as traffic engineers is a standard practice that is followed in preparation of the traffic study. It incorporates or includes basically examination of the site, becoming familiar with the traffic operations, the regulatory controls, the lane arrangements, and so forth in the environment of the project. It includes the sampling of traffic on the adjacent roadway systems, and the samplings are generally done, in the case of shopping centers, to isolate the weekday evening peak hour, the heavy peak, when everybody's driving home from work, or starting to allow to do evening activities, and that generally occurs every weekday sometime between four and five p.m. And then for shopping centers, we always examine weekend periods, Saturday, midday, is also found to be periods when traffic peaks on the roadway, consistent with peaks that might occur from a project. A traffic study also that includes projections forward, those projections include general growth to the roadway system that can be anticipated, that growth is established by Department of Transportation and published data on a yearly basis to provide basis for projecting forward, for general traffic, or position that you might expect a few years out. It includes a projection as to the amount of traffic that might be generated by the project, and to do that, we rely on a document that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's entitled Trip Generation, it's now in its tenth edition, at the time of the preparation of this report, it's in its ninth edition. And that document basically contains a summary of traffic counts that have been conducted at similar uses throughout the state of New Jersey, throughout the nation, and provides the means to utilize that data to project what we can anticipate, the general order of magnitude of traffic that might be generated by a project. It is a very healthy database, it is used by all regulatory agencies in projection of traffic for impact analysis, it's widely accepted throughout the country. And then lastly, a traffic impact study includes a modeling analysis, that modeling analysis uses, in this day and age, several different types of tools and platforms that provides the ability to evaluate and rate the result of traffic characteristics on the roadway system, and then relate them in the case of the New Jersey Department of Transportation to criteria that they provide as to the allowable use of capacities of the roadway system. And all of that's documented in the traffic study. Traffic is probably about eighty percent of times, twenty percent hard, it is not an exact science, but it is a very good tool in terms of being able to generate and understand the general order of magnitude of traffic. We're not looking to result at the end of the day with the exact numbers, but we want to get the whole part, to understand what movements might need additional capacity, how the signals should be timed to accommodate the next flow of traffic, and so, that's the document that's in the study. The studies also were submitted as part of the applications to the Department of Transportation. The Department of Transportation embedded all the material from traffic count data to the traffic projections, to the analysis, tested various options to that analysis that they wanted to see, tested the models, and as a result of all of that information came back with an ultimate conclusion. In this particular case, I can, a little bit unusual, I can indicate that the Department of Transportation actually took a proactive role in some of the way they wanted to see the design proceed, particularly in terms of how the wooden road jug handle was designed. They had several options, they actually developed for us to test, and as a result of that, working with the department, the plan that we presented tonight is what was developed, with their expertise and their input to the project. So, a little bit further on the technical end, that's the general incorporation of a traffic study. A few things for the board to understand with regard to actual technical aspects in that study. Traffic counts were initiated back in two thousand and thirteen, with accounts of the long, the harder. Since that time, traffic counts have also been undertaken in two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand, and recently is two thousand and nineteen. One thing that we found interesting throughout the various updated samplings we have done, and I think this also shows up in the reported traffic and public support, is that the data we collected in two thousand thirteen represents the highest data we've pretty much seen since that period of time. It is still represented with the road system, it's actually a little bit conservative in terms of its representation of the operation of the road system. So, the traffic study, even though dates back, was initiated back in two thousand thirteen, is remaining relevant. The traffic data is still conservative, it is still appropriate for design, and certainly it has been accepted by the Department of Transportation. With regard to the traffic projections that were made, the project that's proposed is a shopping center. Today, the application before you is for the development of three hundred and forty-two thousand square foot retail space on this site, that will be made up as the shopping center is, by multiple tenants, including some retail parents, a supermarket, entertainment uses, and so, all typical makeups of a shopping center. The Department of Transportation requires the use of that database, it is the most representative database of the site. What should be aware, however, that back when we started this project, we planned and have been still planning for three hundred and eighty thousand square feet of the site. All of our numbers at this point in time are conservative and based upon a permit that will be granted that would commit up to three hundred and eighty thousand square feet of retail space. What does that mean in terms of updated projections, if you look at three hundred and forty-two thousand square foot shopping center, it would generate roughly ninety to a hundred less trips per hour than what we have designed for. So, we've put a little bit of pushing built into our analysis. We would also note that when we did the analysis, we elected not to try to strip out the traffic associated with the small details that were on this site, so this letter, the post office, we left that in the background traffic. That traffic probably represents someplace between fifty to a hundred additional peak hour trips an hour on the roadway system, so the delta is closer to someplace between a hundred and fifty to two hundred trips per hour. Now, I've seen in some correspondence and previous applications, certainly there becomes a concern when there's a user that comes in that people view as being unique and maybe a very high generator, in this case wagons, and does that fit the shopping center profile? The answer is yes. The wagon fits right into the shopping center profile, is properly represented by the database. It's seven square feet of T, is customer typical use in a shopping center, it just includes different components of retailing within it that's typical in a shopping center, and combines, not unlike a department store, that combines different retail uses with it. However, to take it a step further, noting that this would probably be a question and a concern to the board and to the public, we took the opportunity to do some monitoring of a center that contains a wagon. The existing Course Point Center in Woodbridge, a very active area, an area with a lot of population, has a four hundred thousand square foot center that includes a wagon. We took the opportunity to monitor that site, it had two simple driveways, we counted it on weekday evenings, and we counted it on the Saturdays. For the board's information, I'll give you the results, I knew a bit surprising to myself. In the evening peak hour, the one hour period, we counted over one thousand four hundred vehicles coming in and out of that site on the data panel over the evening peak hour. Based upon the data source, the ninth edition I T P, it would have projected that the site would have generated one thousand five hundred and seventeen vehicles, or more, handful of vehicles, and a lot. On a Saturday, the actual traffic counts show a total of one thousand three hundred and eighty miles at that center of two thousand and three vehicles. The I T P data source, the ninth edition that we used, suggested that site should have generated two thousand one hundred and fifty three vehicles, about a hundred and fifty vehicles or more, and is actually being utilized at that site. I thought that is important information for the board to validate the fact that the traffic projections that are used for this site are appropriate. Not only are they appropriate in terms of using the I T P database, but because of the fact that we designed the three hundred and eighty thousand square feet, and the fact that we have not removed the existing traffic from the roadway system, we still pay pushing in. So, the result of our analysis, our levels of service, and our roadway improvements will all operate better than we designed for and projected for. Let me ask you just a little bit about D O T. The D O T process, before you turn to D O T.
Why did you use Woodbridge?
Basically, it was a convenient location at two driveways, and that was a very nice resource to take that account out of Lincoln's and four hundred thousand square feet, so we sent them a couple of them to act. So, with regard to the D O T, I think it's important to understand a little bit about D O T and their process. D O T is the Federal jurisdictional agency with regard to traffic. Access permits under the D O T process are issued based upon the state highway access code. The state highway access code was adopted back in nineteen ninety-two. The purpose of the state highway access code was to create a fair and balanced method to evaluate impact of projects, so that they would identify their relevant utilization of roadway capacities, and provide for mitigation as required in accordance with established criteria that was available and applicable to everyone in the state doing land development. From that standpoint, the access code does recognize that any project is going to generate new traffic and add that to the roadway system. It also recognizes that every property owner has rights to utilize some of the capacity on the roadway system. So, there are specific standards within the access code that permit some utilization and increases in delays and output and recent capacity on the roadway system, relatively constricted, and the closer the roadway is operating at two capacity, the less you are allowed to use the remaining capacity, and if the roadways are over capacity, you cannot degrade the roadways at the front. So, it is a relatively restrictive process, but it is something that provides performance criteria in terms of evaluating and identifying impacts of the project. The department elected to have a study intersections on Route thirty-five corridor from Harmony Road, all the way to North, to Conings Street, all the way to South. We analyzed some seven or eight traffic signals along the corridor, plus a whole host of unsignaled intersections. All of that data was provided by the department, all of that data was vetted by the department, it went through process by multiple groups at the department, and the conclusion resulted in the issuance of the access permit for the improvements that we are proposing to construct for this project. As I said, you already have a game with D O T, we could have access permit, we could have a developer agreement. So, all that being said, what is it going to happen? I'm going to refer, I guess we have an office in the evidence.
The last one was, Tommy?
I think it's A fifteen.
Eight sixteen?
Eight sixteen.
Who'd you bet? Eight fifteen was more likely?
Eight fifteen.
Okay, this is A sixteen, okay. So, A sixteen, they had the title of Lockman, by Langan, the title of Shop to Middletown, overall concept dated May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. But the plan is, is a overall print of basically what I've called the signs and the striking plans from the design set annotated with color to highlight the roadway system.
This is not filed in color, but it's already applied?
On file in terms of highway plans, and these are from the D O T, the highway plan set.
Was this previously submitted to the board?
We did submit drawn copies of the highway plan sets, correct?
Yes.
But not with color?
Not with color. So, the yellow highlighted on here was added to, was previously submitted?
Correct.
How about the stuff submitted to the board? Between the files, how about pointing this?
Well, I don't think you have, it's part of an eighty-two sheet plan set, so the professionals probably have that plan set on the board. It's really, it's not just one sheet, it's a huge plan set.
This, the thermobaric major site on this thing?
No, that's a, it's a D O T documents, that your professionals wanted to see, it's really matter to check this item on the, it would be in your professionals. So, referring to A sixteen, and it's also on the left, the project basically shows the proposed three hundred and forty-two thousand square foot shopping center through the center of the project, and this is the Monte, they did a good job with the last two hearings, I think, going through the layout, circulation patterns, performance of redevelopment plan of the shopping center itself. I'm not focused on that, I'm going to focus on the roadway system. Towards the bottom of the plan is Route thirty-five, with the left-hand side of the board being north, the right-hand side of the board being south. Towards the right-hand side of the board is existing Kings Lane, which heads back to the College Works facility, Kings Lane, shown on a gradient scale. To the left-hand side of the board is Kings Highway East, basically in its current configuration. Shown in yellow on the board is basically the areas that we will be constructing or reconstructing pavements surrounding the shopping center. So, the shopping center itself has access points on what consists of the connector road, as you're aware, the connector road is a requirement to be constructed, connecting Kings Lane in the south to Kings Highway in the north. That will be a public roadway within a right-of-way, it has been designed, it is a local road. To answer a question at the last meeting, we will add the plan poster. It is intended to be posted at twenty-five miles per hour, that is consistent with the nature of the surrounding roadways, the surrounding properties, which is a business district and residential district on one side, thirty-nine, and I believe that posting is consistent with what we want to see on this roadway, wanting a residential neighborhood, a stop sign, that those posting signs would be added. The county, the council, we need to adopt a resolution enabling enforcement of all the stop signs, as well as the posted speed limits on the site. To the south side of the project, where we have Kings Lane, the project will consist of a reconfiguration of the existing Woodland Road jug handles. So, what we will occur, or actors should describe what's happening today. So, Kings Lane today is basically a dead-end street, it heads back towards the D P W, it also provides access to several businesses, some homes along its length. The only access to Kings Lane today is via the right-in, right-out connection from Route thirty-five, right into the actual throat of the takeoff area for existing nearside Woodland Drive jug handle. The Woodland Drive jug handle itself is substandard, it has access drivers connecting to it, and consistent with the access code, it actually has developed on the infield of that, inconsistent with the access code. And those businesses actually today utilize the jug handle for activities such as truck unloading, and circulation to their trash enclosures, and basically, it's an outdated, outmoded, and it's a jug handle that no longer meets today's design criteria standards. So, the project has been established with the department, and as I said, they were very much involved in the configuration of the jug handle, and whatever, cultivating that to accomplishing multiple improvements at that location. First of all, Kings Lane itself is going to be realigned, to come in at a ninety-degree angle, rather than the awkward backstreet that exists today. There will be a right turn lane, which doesn't exist today, constructed, feeding into Kings Lane. Kings Lane's connection to Route thirty-five will be designed according to current N J T. NJTD DOT design criteria for the right-in, right-out designs with a channelizing pile in between. As Kane Lane, Kane's Lane is back towards the site, it will then be back to the south and reconnect to the existing alignment of Kane's Lane as you get back towards, uh, the connector road. That will provide a substantially improved safety condition along Route thirty-five and eliminate, uh, that conflict point that's in the beginning of the jug handle. To re-acomplish the jug handle movement, uh, the department has elected to utilize the system of private streets, uh, which includes a portion of the site circulation, uh, north-south road, uh, in order to provide a public easement, which will allow traffic that wants to go U-turn or heading to the neighborhoods to the west of us, to come in to Kane's Lane, make the left, and make the left, and come back to the signal. The approach to the signal will be improved, we will have two left turn lanes, a left turn lane, a left turn ring, and a right turn lane, improving the capacity on the approach to the signal, this outbound only as the jug handles today. Uh, the, all of that will be accomplished and maintained in the easement to the public utilization of, of that section of roadway. With those improvements, we improve the safety aspects of, uh, of the operation of that movement, we improve the capacity and operation, uh, of that roadway system. Ultimately, uh, there will be a vacation of the existing old right-of-way, uh, once this is constructed, and improvements will be accomplished within the jug handle for the appliance shop and wall shop, which will also provide good connectivity and safer connectivity for those sites to the roadway system. So there's substantial reinforcement and realignment and reconstruction of the Woodland Drive jug handle, which, uh, will result in enhanced capacity accommodating shopping center traffic. Uh, ultimately, at that location, if you were heading from the south on Route thirty-five, you would be able to use the Woodland Drive jug handle to access the site, you could turn right on Kane's Lane, you'd then make a left and be able to proceed into the shopping center. You would also be able to proceed back on Kane's Lane to the connector road and come in, uh, or, uh, the connector road, and ultimately that also provides linkages to the subject of another renovation residential, uh, project to the west of us. Uh, if you were leaving the shopping center, one of the avenues that this creates is the ability to either exit, you'll use Kane's Lane and the right turn to Route thirty-five and look out, walk on out to the traffic signal and make the left or the right to Route thirty-five, southbound, and look out. As you go to the northern end of the project.
Before you move, before you move to that, what about the existing, uh, access points from thirty-five to community appliance and wall slip shop, et cetera, will they remain?
They are remaining, yes. Uh, and shoulder on the frontage, it was remaining and repaved. Uh, Route thirty-five, the project area along that frontage, shoulder lane and the near travel lane will all be repaved, uh, resection, uh, and improved, so everything will be clean in that area when the, uh, back construction is completed. So then moving to the northern end of the project, as we move north on Route thirty-five, uh, our front door is developed, the right turn and right turn driveway to the central area in front of buildings five, uh, from Route thirty-five. Uh, to create that, uh, the project will be constructing substantial improvements on Route thirty-five, look down, that include widening Route thirty-five toward the site within right-of-way that we are providing with DOT, starting basically at Horizon Shops and heading northbound. That widening will basically take the third lane that starts today just up by, uh, the Twin Brooks Jug Handle and carry it further to, to a beginning point at our southern property. So at our southern, uh, just from up at Horizon, we will pick up three lanes. The third lane that will be constructed will carry north through the intersection, ultimately connecting to the existing third lane that exists between Twin, Twin, Twin Brooks and , uh, Timber Road. Uh, in addition, uh, we will be constructing an additional lane, deceleration lane and auxiliary lane, that will provide, uh, in accordance with DOT standards, a decel area to a new nearside jug handle that's being constructed, uh, to feed into, uh, Twin Brooks Avenue extension. So as we step, we walk up, so at the central driveway, people that are coming north on Route thirty-five, they will make a right into the center, or may go right out of the center, so they're going for the, they go right into the center and a right out of the center. The more extensive improvements are occurring at, uh, the northern end of the project. Uh, those consist of a complete reconstruction of the Twin Brooks Avenue jug handle system and traffic signal. Uh, it includes the Twin Brooks Avenue extension to tie back into Kane's Highway. Uh, so, uh, basically as you are, I'll state from the northbound side, as you come north on Route thirty-five today, uh, in front of the Circus Liquor Site, there is a nearside jug handle that is very shallow in depth, uh, substandard, has driveways on it that people are using to cut through, uh, the parking lots between Route thirty-five and, uh, King's Highway East. That is shadowed in red. To give you a sense of the magnitude of the reconstruction, we are building the new jug handle to DOT standards, pulling the nose of the jug handle, uh, substantially away from thirty-five to provide proper queuing on the approach to the traffic signal, uh, and proper deceleration lane to the jug handle, uh, so that we have a free flow of traffic through the system and eliminate the constraints associated with the outdated, uh, nearside jug handle. You're also eliminating the multiple curb cuts that exist through this section of Route thirty-five on the jug handle to Wells Fargo, to the Old Postal Office, to the Circus Liquor Site, all of those are being cleaned up and will consist of a single right-in, right-out driveway to the Wells Fargo property in accordance with current DOT standards. Uh, Twin Brooks Extension, as opposed to the east, will come through the property. To give you some sense of where it will be located, shaded in gray, is the liquor store. So we're coming in just to the north side of the liquor store, through the existing parking lots, the existing pavement areas of the parking lots, uh, along the side of the liquor store, back toward its loading, and then continuing to tie into Twin Brooks just to the, what I would call the west of, uh, Noble Gardens. And that realignment provides, uh, for the ability to provide access to the shopping center from the realigned extended Twin Brooks, uh, section. So at that location, you'll be able to make a left turn in, the left turn lane, you'll be able to make a right turn in, you'll be able to make a left turn out, and a right turn out. Uh, King's Highway will be turned and reconnected back around the backside of Wells Fargo, opposite the access to the shopping center, and the existing piece of King's Highway between the realigned section and the interconnected road will be removed and masked and put it back into an actual state. The sidewalk connections that are there will, will remain, uh, and continue to provide that, that connectivity. So if you're coming from the north, uh, on Route thirty-five, one of the challenges to this property through the years is how to turn the traffic southbound into the site. Uh, the existing configuration of the jug handle is highly, uh, uh, restrictive, it has no queuing ability, uh, it is a unique design, uh, that was developed many, many years ago for a different time and era, that was trying to create a two-phase traffic signal here that accommodated the lines that existed back in the seventies or so, uh, when, when that was designed, and is no longer functional, no longer functional for the existing traffic, and, uh, as we planned through the years on this, it would have been functional for the center. So we needed to deal with how to get the left turns in, and that created the opportunity as all the properties to the south of us are all developed, uh, and really create no opportunity, uh, to provide additional turns into, uh, the site. So to do that, we took a hard look at this intersection, uh, the current DOT design standards, the analysis, uh, and modeling, uh, and the practical numbers, and what we realized in working with the department was the existing nearside right turn jug handle was underutilized, really an unnecessary, uh, component, and it restricted the, the length and size of the loop, so to speak, returning to traffic to the north as well as across the highway. So we took advantage of that, uh, and what we are proposing to do, what we have approved to do, is we're going to remove the nearside right slip ramp on Twin Brooks through Route thirty-five, south. We are going to completely reconstruct the loop, uh, southbound, uh, both widening it, bringing it up to current DOT standards, and most importantly, moving the nose of the jug handle from a location from about where it is today, about sixty feet from the signal, sorry, I shouldn't be handling, uh, to about a hundred and sixty feet from the signal. So we're bringing those way away from the site, uh, so, uh, from thirty-five. Associated with that, the, the two lanes that are available in that sixty feet today are being expanded to four lanes, will be a double left turn lane, a through lane, and a through right turn lane, and, uh, building length and, uh, with the roadway rewired and reconstructed back to about the driveway for the Vehio Shopping Center, the Stop and Shop, uh, driveway. Is that company? We are taking a jug handle today that has less than four hundred feet of effective storage, probably goes to three, three fifty, three sixty, uh, to over a thousand feet of effective storage. We are taking sixty-foot limiting nose, pulling it back to a hundred and sixty feet. What that will do is provide the ability to possibly vehicles through that jug handle, allowing them to properly queue on the approach to the traffic signal, so when that traffic signal was green, we can move three hundred feet of stored vehicles in each of those lanes through the traffic signal. Today, what happens, if you're familiar with that intersection, these two or three people get in the right lane because they're going course, make the left, and go up King's Highway, they block the nose, start to back up on the signal. We're rectifying, we're addressing, that's an issue, an issue that was always challenged trying to get left turns into the site. So, the perception that that, we were getting traffic in that condition to continue, uh, is, is not a proper perception, it is known, uh, we, we work very closely with the department in evaluating the operation of the signal, the queuing, the observation, the placement of the nose, uh, to make sure that no effect traffic would flow through their project. It is a complete reconstruction of the.
Shoot your back.
Everything you see in yellow will need to be fully reconstructed, full-dead roadway, or repaved, uh, repaved roadway. The signal's brand new, the signal.
Excuse me, half, half of the presentation, we, we don't.
I don't know anything you're talking about.
You know, occasionally you point something out to us, but two-thirds of it is, is just for the board. We, we don't have, have any idea what we're talking about.
He's a, Sunday is a.
Like a TV screen.
It's germane, it's a hell of a, it allows us questions, if they can't witness something.
And we just got the information.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to. I know you are, but the board gets to see the whole thing, and we see, pardon me, maybe a third of your whole presentation. We're missing out on.
So, it, as I was saying, it is a complete reconstruction, reconstruction, new traffic signals at Twin Brooks, at Woodbridge, at, uh, at Woodmore, uh, and Walt's, current DOT standards, Walt's and current, uh, highway standards.
I'll give you suggestions, can you flat, can you make that, I put aside that, can you make a parallel, just making, who leads here for public, for members to see it? Let's slide it up here. Just, just, just.
That's what I'm saying, like, it's kind of far away, but.
That's why they're building a new municipal complex.
And we, you don't have.
They couldn't do a TV show with all the technology.
We're trying to identify.
It's bizarre, they.
It's kind of like TV.
We couldn't see that either.
So, as I was saying, uh, if everything's shown in yellow, you buy the, fully reconstructed roadway, roadway, or repaved roadway, uh, surrounding the site. Uh, this is a project that came built fully as a course of a developer, the money involved with this construction, uh, and not including the one side improvements and the connector road, where, where, where that place where we're building close to seven, eight, like a lot of those made in construction, improvements to current DOT. Uh, all of this is designed to current standards, and DOT standards now, uh, but before to notice, this isn't just about the cost. Uh, this project also includes the adoption of complete street principles, which is something that is adopted by the former transportation, and is also embodied in the master plan. What are complete street principles? Complete, complete streets is a design philosophy. It is not a set of standards, but it means you have separate but equal bus lanes, separated equal bike lanes, separate but equal pedestrian lanes. It means an engineer utilizing the design standards that exist, understanding the environment, and incorporates the design elements that reflect that environment and accommodate all modes of transportation, in automobile, walking, bicyclist, uh, handicapped, uh, persons. This project does incorporate a complete street design philosophy. With regard to the pedestrian environment surrounding the site, and it shows up, uh, in red throughout the site, we are building over two point one miles new software in this project. That includes about eighty new handicapped individuals surrounding the property. That is, in addition to whatever is occurring inside the site, so that's the side of also connector road, both sides of the connector road, Kane's Lane, along Route thirty-five, uh, along, uh, the Twin Brooks extension, uh, and along Twin Brooks itself extending back into the site. Uh, that includes pedestrian improvements coursing through Route thirty-five. Today, while there's a pink push-button app there, theoretically could course the south side of thirty-five, I'm not sure you can get there too easily. Uh, we are incorporating the accessible pedestrian path with pedestrian protections in the traffic signal up course of thirty-five. So we are creating a scenario, which is important because there is a bus stop on the southbound side and a bus stop in front of the Vehio Shopping Center, uh, which we are addressing with a bus stop location in design on the northbound side within the jug handle. Uh, so we are accommodating access to multi-modal transit by improving accessibility, uh, to the transit facilities. We are also at the south traffic signal, uh, actually building a place for people to get out of buses, and there's a bus stop there, which will walk out and be walking into the woods. And that will be a pad, a sidewalk, uh, and a, uh, a bus shelter. Bus shelters are provided by, uh, New Jersey Transit at the request of the township, there are multiple different designs, they're very stylish designs, and, you know, they basically put them in place after projects build and then re-accept. The, uh, the bus stop locations, so we are building two bus stops, pads, all properly designed to New Jersey Transit standards as well as DOT standards, uh, where a bus will be able to pull onto a shoulder, out of the travel lane, uh, and provide service, uh, transit service and, and connectivity, more importantly, to a sidewalk system that doesn't exist today, and the ability to get to the return, uh, bus stop location on the south side by the pedestrian improvements, uh, through the traffic signals that will be occurring. Uh, with regard to bicycle combination, bicycle combination is accomplished by making sure you have the right lanes. In terms of bike compatible lanes, the use of fifteen-foot curb lanes is a bike compatible lane. The extension is built with fifteen-foot curb lanes, which is bike compatible. Route thirty-five will have fifteen-foot curb lanes and a shoulder, the existing tent with shoulders, which is considered bike compatible. The connector road is thirty feet wide, a fifteen-foot lane in which direction, which is bike compatible, and which will also have, uh, shared markings for the manual uniform traffic control devices marked along, uh, this lane. Pedestries are accommodated with, as I said, overeating, uh, handicap ramps being built, built each to be into crosswalks. There's crosswalks. There's crosswalks on three legs of the connector road of Kings Highway. There are crosswalks in the driveway with the extension. There are crosswalks across Route 35 at both traffic signals. There are two crosswalks properly located along the connector road and at King's Lane. And all of those will probably will be sidelined towards the manual uniform traffic control devices. So we are accommodating pedestrians. Overall, the project is a substantial enhancement, a change in the conditions that are existing. We are addressing existing difficulties and possible road system, providing enhanced capacity to the site. At the end of the day, just to reiterate, if you wanted to get into the site coming from the south, you would be able to turn at King's Lane and enter the shopping center directly, or go back to the connector road and use connections from the connector road. There are two primary ones, and then a truck one to the active between the wait minutes. You would be able to enter a small lap pad next to the traffic signal by way in driving only. Or you would be able to continue south to our front door and come in directly into the site at the central portion in front of Building 5. Or lastly, you would have the option to come down the jug handle, make the right, and come into the driveway from the extension. So multiple ways to get into the site, moving south, heading back to the south. You either do give an out onto the extension from either the connector road, or from the direct driveway to the extension. Or quite frankly, you can want to northbound 35 and come around the jug handle and come to the traffic signal that's been the traffic signal and make the left to southbound 35. Alternatively, you could come to the signal at Woodmore and make the left to southbound 35. If you're heading to the north, you'd be able to make a right out from the traffic signal, from King's Lane, from the central driveway. You would be able to come across the extension to Kings Highway East, to use the existing right out from the 35 northbound there. Or you could make the left onto the extension and make the right out. Southbound coming into the site, you can come down to the reconstructed jug handle, take the right, use one of the two through lanes, come across the site, and either enter directly into the site or go back to the connector road and enter into the site. So that provides the multiple ways of ingress and egress to the site, to dissipate the traffic, to move the traffic in and out of the site in a safe manner. All of this is designed to accommodate RPE traffic information, which generally occurs weekday evening or Saturday. All of this infrastructure provides substantial benefits during weekday mornings or the afternoon hours when shopping centers aren't as highly active. So the capacities that are created here provides residual benefits during the times of day when a shopping center isn't typically active. With regards to the site, the site itself is really laid out, and Charlotte's really done a good job on testimony. It is designed in accordance with the redevelopment plan. It has a circulation system that provides distribution to various parking lots, to the separation to the loading areas. It is a very typical design for the shopping center with circulatory and parking elements which are located to feed the businesses that will operate herein. The circulation elements are all designed to accommodate the types and frequencies of vehicles that we expect using these roadway systems. The site is also multi-modal compatible. It has key sidewalks, as Charlotte's described, and it has two meetings. It has bike racks providing compatibility, it has heavy-duty landscaping, which is a part of complete streets design, creating an environment that is comfortable for pedestrian activity and separation of vehicles and pedestrians in certain locations. And it connects well to the road system. I think that really sums up the overall results of the rebuild project. Just wanted to check my notes. Just from a traffic engineer's standpoint, the resultant level of service that those board knows levels of service, a couple dozen engineers try to boil down the qualification of operating positions, what we call levels of service, would describe it as a grade school report card. A great level of service asking failures, generally we design, we see a deep levels of service. The intersections that we have redesigned here will all operate at levels of service C or better. And as I said, they meet the stringent requirements that the Department has set in terms of allowable use of road capacity. So while we are anti-trafficking, we've looked at that, we have provided a driveway system, an improvement package, and a design that will accommodate that traffic and very quickly address a lot of pre-existing conditions. And also one last thing I want to touch on, a current one, that's two meetings, the garden range. These improvements also include a substantial reconstruction of drainage. This drainage on Route 35 has been modeled together since 1950 with various little improvement projects they've done through the years. It basically go back, we had those plants, have connected pipes here and there through the years. And quite frankly, it was a massive tangling. We are building a new drainage system from one of our prodigy. The system basically will feed into a new detention basin within the jug handle, meaning current DOT and DPP standards. That will retain the water, that'll continue then on to outflow where it does today. The system from our connection to the outflow will be cleaned according to current DOT requirements. So the southbound side will be a substantial improvement to the drainage with retention that does not exist today. The northern end of the project also will be picked up on the onsite detention basin for the most part. There is some modest drainage that still connects to the existing state system that exits the loop at that location. It will really reduce some of the flows to that section and not changing that. On the western side of Route 35, that was really a tangled mess. We're cleaning up the piping there, simplifying the inlets and the pipe construction. And again, that runs through a system that hopefully crosses the median and fossil outlets at the same location as the northbound side. We're cleaning that mess up, and we will be cleaning the system to the outflow there. So we are improving the drainage system also as part of this project. Also, so it's multi-passing in terms of what's being constructed to support the park.
The jug handle on the southbound side, does the study include the only way the southbound traffic is entering the south? Correct. And does that anticipate that service within that jug handle handling the traffic through us?
Yes, everything's designed according to 15 geometry. It's an 18-foot wide ramp. The lanes are all 12 feet, 15 feet on the outside. All the back end handles will be case vehicles, again, crossing at large or frequent use through these intersections. But accountability, design standards accommodate those uses and our geometry will accommodate those trucks on it. The service will be used in the front side as well as existing trucks that may be using the jug handle.
Did you anticipate that jug handle is also going to become an easier way, if you're headed southbound, to get to King's Lane?
Yeah, I mean, certainly the connectivity of the connector road is a proper planning element within your master plan, as part of the redevelopment plan. It is in accordance with the state code, and yes, it will allow distribution of some traffic to use King's Lane. Again, it's not a great amount of traffic that's going back and around King's Lane. And the activity on King's Lane is generally walking to the shopping center. So King's Lane by virtue of the connector road and the connection to two signals, quite frankly, now, will have the advantage to get to road systems and much greater areas of the state.
I don't know that I agree with you on that comment, that the activity on King's Lane is not concurrent with or compatible with the high volume because I think of the wait minutes, I think you could say this, that weekend time, let's say Saturdays, maybe anybody's been to shopping on Saturdays, it's a zoo, right? It's not a zoo right now. But King's Lane on the weekends, right, is where, I mean, I was backed up, besides the dance recital on Saturday, not like, not this year. King's Lane was backed up for recycling, 10, 15 cars back because of the time of year. And I actually thought this through, because I remember seeing the plans, that where I was backed up to would be where that road is. So then I'm thinking, okay, well, okay, so there's some new homes being built, we'll deal with that later. But I can see folks in kind of my area of town, over by South High School, and kind of in, you know, the village school area, and folks over there in Taylor Way, now using what Mr. Chairman just talked about, using that roundabout there to get through, which I think, well, I guess the question for you is, you know, I think there's a lot of behavioral changes that I started seeing right away, just because of where I live. I don't know what the population of my area of town is compared to the rest of town, the suburbs like this, but I think you're going to have a lot more trips, people like me not using the shopping center, who are going to be cutting through, kind of like bang over there.
And that's, that's fine, that's the intent. The purpose of creating, the purpose of...
Shh. Whoa, 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 please.
In transportation design, the purpose of creating the connectivity, the connector road, the connections to the traffic signal, is to create the choice and the ability for people to take multiple ways to get to and from their destination. Whereas today, Eric, it's great. Today, you gotta go down the apple, come around, you gotta write in, write out. That you'd be able to, if you're coming from Kings Highway to, Kings Highway to the east, to be able to...
You two ladies up here in front, you're getting picked up on the microphones here, you're writing me out this desk, so please.
You'd be able to come in and use the connector road. So it does provide the ability to dissipate traffic, it gives the ability to choose alternative paths. And the capacity is created, will accommodate that traffic, building, you know, coverage actually, which is something we want to do from a traffic standpoint. The best thing we can do from a traffic standpoint is create multiple avenues of choice and approach so that people can get to and from their destinations, more correct traffic, yeah, we do that.
When you say that, you're including their destination being the new development plus just generally destinations like the recycling center or the dance studio.
Yeah, I think recycling center activities include, you know, these traffic lines. It is fine on Saturday, and I think our numbers show like 188 vehicles making a way out of there on the Saturday mid-50 at the time. And I would expect that you, you know, looking at the existing levels of service, I would expect that that queue that you suspect that you see is there. But now you let the opportunity to come out, for people on a better approach with better site lines, on a...
Well, I don't know, that, that, that's perfect.
Or you'll let the opportunity to use the connector road, if you leave the east, and you're doing a roundabout, way 35 connectivity within the road, you now have more direct connectivity there. So, so it allows traffic to choose the most correct path. Now it will mitigate traffic, it will help improve existing traffic blocks. We're basically taking a constrained substandard system and creating, bringing it up to modern standards, creating better opportunities and greater connectivity for people to make choices on how to travel, both existing traffic paths as well as new uses. Now, for instance, you have today's movement, which is a substantial return around the substandard jug handle. People are getting into that right lane, take the left, and then get on Kings Highway. That's a very tight movement that's distinct during the evening, six, seven, eight o'clock at night. You'll now be able to run the strip. So you've got a more direct, safer, and a more convenient way to make the movements. We do see that we're going to have some shifting of traffic from the natural one, creating capacities. As I said, we modeled, are we 100% accurate? No, we have a ballpark, yes, we're going to create capacities to accommodate these types of shifts, yes.
Does this include your numbers here, the two things, undeveloped but approved new activity on the center? Where the company does and the gas station are, now where they used to be the garden center.
Whatever was active, that is, when we did our councils and 13s and our base lines, whatever, they get approved on those locations or subject to their own traffic studies.
But they're already approved.
Then they will be accommodated by this activity. It creates the infrastructure for them as well as anything else, where that was solid, their driveways, and their, and the Department would have been aware of their applications as they do our application during the last three years, please.
Harold, you've studied that south jug handle, and there are the improvements to it. Everybody that uses that today, whether it's short one exists or the new one, the biggest vote of attention is those trying to go straight or turn right coming out of Twinbrooks itself, and those trying to make a left turn on Route 35. How are you addressing those intentions?
Well, as I said, what you remember, what's difficult today, what I like today, is that what you see today, you can't envision it being there in this economy. The problem you see there today, the difficulty you see, all of that's gone, all of the roads are gone now. The tight little jug handle that comes in really close to the traffic signal with the double left turn lane, the nearside jug handle that people are cutting through to and from Kings Highway to the parking lot, all of that's gone. And that shadow of gray, you can see those elements in gray, it's completely reconstructed with a much more open loop. That comes back with nose that's properly pulled away from 35, much greater distance is feeding not two lanes, but four lanes. Two lanes you don't through, two lanes just continuing to make the left, and those lanes continue to extend and take right and get back to the Veneo Drive. So it is a completely different environment that will exist here at the end of construction. Also, in the southbound direction, we can see the relationship, if you're trying to compare the existing jug handle, which is in race scale here, versus the new jug handle, which is properly, again, pulled away from 35, set with the queues, has a two-lane approach so that left turns are separated from the right turn so that somebody's really making a left, you can still clearly cleanly make the right turn, has a D cell lane into it that provides the ability to slow it as you raise it to 35. So it is, you can't envision what's there today and try to picture how traffic is going to fall after you do one of those.
But you haven't shown me how.
I am showing that.
No, 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 and please, we're asking about the jug handle, I don't care about the northbound 35. Questioning any of that, is that one or two lanes into the jug handle?
It's one lane, as it is today. To take off is exactly, or very close to where it is today. In gray is the existing jug handle, in yellow is the new jug handle, which is going to be built to the outside of the existing jug handle. That existing jug handle, the existing, the existing jug handle comes back towards Route 35 and continues to sweep. As you come up towards Twinbrooks Avenue, it actually splits, there is the left turn to go up to Twinbrooks, and then there's the channelizing island which forces the right turn vehicles and enters and meets Twinbrooks about 60 feet from the stop bar. When we're done, the jug handle will be enlarged, it will be coming in at 160 feet on Route 35. It'll be coming into the back end of four lanes of traffic for queuing up to this traffic signal instead of the two lanes at 60 feet. Basically, I'm taking 60 feet of theoretical queue, 60, 60, 120 feet of theoretical queue, and giving the ability to queue in four 300-foot lanes. 300, 60, so it's a 600-foot of queue area, multiple times the queue area.
Into that jug handle and come around.
Why don't you come around first, but if you're making, if you're going through, you'll continue in, and you can choose one of two through lanes. That'll give you the ability to come across the two through lanes. across the two through lanes, or if you're making a left to go back to the north, you'll be able to go into one, either one or two left turn lanes. So you have a left turn, so you can walk the jug handle, you can get into far left, either near left, or you can get into either two through lanes, and all of those provide the queue while the signal is red, in order to load that signal properly, so that when it goes green, that traffic can move efficiently. The signal will be split phased, so when that movement goes green, it'll be kind of conflicted, so it'll be able to move, clear the jug handle, any queue that occurs in the jug handle, and process it through. Likewise, when the westbound approach goes, it'll be undeflicted, it'll be able to move through the jug handle. The median that's, that's in the middle has gone, and it allows for that clean movement of traffic for the intersection.
When I get to the top of the jug handle, I've entered it, yes, I'm there, how many cars are, can be queued up before they're in my way?
Each of these lanes?
Well, the only one that matters to me is the first one.
Well, you basically have one hundred and sixty feet of queue area, so that's roughly a twenty to twenty-three foot car, six to seven cars, but you have, but you have two lanes, you have two lanes with that queuing ability, and then you have, as you just say, the jug handles. Effectively, I've got a thousand feet of queuing versus less than four hundred feet of queuing today.
Yeah.
I know, yeah, I mean, this is something we went very carefully with the department, they were very involved with that, they looked at that, queues were something that's analyzed, re-analyzed, and we still--
So you look at the department. Or-- Such a hazard. Do you think eight cars keeps everybody coming in the circle, within the circle, unable to get across or out of it?
If, if they all just went into that one lane, there's no reason why they have two lanes. So you've got one hundred and sixty feet, one hundred and sixty feet, plus the people that are going to the left turn lane. There could be periods where, as it does today, where those lanes load and then start to queue onto the jug handle. That occurs today, it occurs at a lot of far side jug handles, and it will continue at times to actually occur here. But overall, we have nine hundred and ninety-plus area, queue area before backing up to thirty-five, and the signal goes green, and all of that traffic is able to move and clear. And that's the advantage of going for split phase on this, and that's the advantage of moving the nose of the jug handle back. And it is something that was looked at very, very critically, as we went through the design and traffic with this car.
We can have to see this to believe this. But we couldn't see it, I can say that simply because--
Yeah.
--it's a big deal of traffic.
Well--
Hey, everybody's dancing. Well, we've got here, we're into a tracking, seeing the entire shopping center with the maintenance center, drawing people out of the existing developments that Eric is running, so, okay.
And that is the purpose of going through the detailed traffic studies, the planning studies with the department, the analysis we go through, and it's the reason why we're building all of this.
Jug handle, my Apple Road, right here, I guess a jug handle before the girl tracks, that's probably the traffic mind lesson on that. However, all the school buses, I'm sure, are going to take this, going to the schoolyard, it's going to be faster for them if they don't.
It seems to have a car that becomes schooltime buses.
Yeah, well, you know, around a certain time of the day, they'll take the shortcut instead of going all the way down to Apple and making that turn.
Well, I think I, there was something you mentioned earlier, which I think we have to get to, which is there's a wait-ins in this thing, which we're going to get along. Right, but I think a large, we're not talking about the happy and link front, right? We're talking about a massive, massive, intentionally super large supermarket, right? That's their range, the huge facility, so, right, but you even said earlier, there's not a lot more truck traffic, and I'm thinking, again, same concept as I mentioned before, is, you're going to have a lot of eighteen-wheelers coming south on thirty-five. I suppose we can get some coming north too, but I'm thinking coming off the parkway or the turnpike, maybe even thirty-six, we're going to get a lot more eighteen-wheelers, and where are they going to go? Is that jug handle?
Correct. I mean, that's designed, that's designed to accommodate trucks. All of this is designed to accommodate the type of vehicle next. When it doesn't have a continuous caravan of trucks--
No, no, I get that, I understand, the interesting problem is--
--a two-wheel truck was--
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to say, hey, get, get, you know, get eighteen-wheelers in there. But what I'm trying to get to is, what I'm trying to get to is this, is that I just think we all need to acknowledge that that is part of this, number one, and that your study, which is eighty percent art, twenty percent, excuse me, eighty percent science and twenty percent art, I'd like to know where we are on this aspect of it, because we've had lots of applicants in here with similar types of operations, with lots of deliveries and trucks of various sizes, and we always get to the same comment of, or question, of, well, we live at the times of the deliveries, can we change the types of trucks, you know, all these different things, and depending on the applicant, yeah, we try, you know, I think it was one of the convenience stories says, well, you know, we tell our drivers to make their deliveries work before five a.m. Okay, we're not going to be able to control that, right? So if the driver is late, he or she oversleeps, or the delivery coming in, out of overseas, the ships are late, and they, they can't get there until three p.m., we're going to get there at three p.m. And so I guess, back to my art and science question, when you do these databases and standards, this is that wiggle piece, right, where you say, okay, but what happens in those situations where ideally, we want our milk delivered at five a.m., right, because we know people are going to start coming in at six and seven to get fresh milk, but things happen, are we good if, you know, life happens, and you're going to get three, four, five eighteen-wheelers at three o'clock on Thursday, are we good with this?
Yes. The answer, yes. First of all, we're designed to repeat loads, not only designed to be factoring in truck factors, truck percentages into the analysis, and what we're seeing on the way. The other answer to this is, you know, I understand and why, why we went out and sampled this site, in terms of traffic generation, the perception that this is some beast that is generating charades and trucks. It's not very, very efficient physically. Their truck, their truck loads are probably somewhere on the load of five to ten tractor trailers a day, twenty to thirty smaller trucks per day. That is not different than shop, right? Actually, shopway actually usually does twenty to thirty tractor trailers a day, different model now. They deliver, a stop and shop, I think, is more of an efficient, but it is not out of the relative typical supermarket uses in these things, because it's, it's come around them to be efficient, you know, just, they're not taking their loads, they're taking their loads and go for it. The other thing I would suggest to you, through practice standpoint, we all shop, we all go, this isn't some new shopping center, new concept, that's creating something that's unknown. I would especially suggest to the board members and the public behind you, how many times have you been in a shopping center and ran from a problem? I mean, it is infrequent that you run into that difficulty, because the frequency of trucks in grand scheme, their twelve-hour to fifteen-hour business day, is they are a very small part of the vehicle next. They are designed for, they are separated for as you get to the loading aspects of the site, and it also is a full part of the load we mix as we move up and down.
And I'm, I'm going to counter your argument too, because you're contradicting yourself, because we've talked about this being, I've never heard of what you call it, there's some kind of standard, but it's this complete design, complete streets--
Complete streets, that's a--
Right, so, so, we are not, you even said, this is an attracting feature, not because of the shopping, but because of the way you design the roads. So in a sense, you've actually designed us to bring more cars toward it, which kind of conflicts what you just said.
No, no. Complete streets is a different, complete streets is a design philosophy that, in the past, when you designed something like this, designed to both standards, you really, you don't pay attention to the pedestrian environment, you don't pay attention to the bike environment. In this situation, what complete streets means is, we've embraced those other modes, modes, and we provided the proper challenges, wider lanes, sidewalks.
There's some of the attracting concept, right? Complete streets is, it's okay, we want more bikes, we want more model transportation.
Well, it's a commodity of those elements, whether Emery uses them or not, he can probably argue in three different ways.
But you would, you would say that might be a commodity.
But if somebody wants to walk, to do a two-point-one mile walk around the site, they'll be able to do it. If they want to take a bus to the site, they can do it today, they'll now be able to do it in a safer manner, because they're going to have a sidewalk, they're going to have a landing gear.
I think we need to just make clear and acknowledge that fact, though, that you did clearly say that the design that you've given us as a DOT has, you know, recommended it, and as you said, kind of unusually up, orgically involved, and I think mostly because of the, you know, the line is jug handle, if I understood your judgment, but you did say that this is designed in a way to attract and to relieve, I think the word was, the current traffic patterns, which I think is in and of itself, something that I think most people here, including at least me on the court, want to think through and want to understand a little bit more as it relates to some of the standards you use, some of the factors they may use, because it will change behavioral patterns for people who will never even go into that shopping center. They do exist, those people, and I think that's an important element.
DOT didn't recommend it, and DOT approved it.
Yes.
So DOT is the least confident-- I see that without fear of contradiction.
Nonetheless, they have, they approve it.
They approve it.
It's a major--
They don't live here, they don't drive these streets, and they haven't paid for it.
The, probably have one, Kevin's more, you said you made friendly to bikes, to pedestrians, et cetera. And that, it's got to then change the traffic lane patterns on thirty-five. If you're going to be able to get across thirty-five on foot, or accommodate for bikes to get it through, you've now caused traffic delays in the north of the south.
Now, the point of the signal is that, first of all, most of the, we have, that actually has a push button, of course, it's basically reordering how that is done, and it's all within the operational and basic characteristics of the traffic cycle. It just provides a safe course, you can hit that ramp, the hand indication, the walk-in proper countdown timer, and we're not all within the basic signaling operation. I think it doesn't go total red on this, on the fashion courses, it's still operational, only at the does, it just has the pedestrian is notified when the safe time is provided, of course, whichever individual leg needs crossing. It doesn't, doesn't change the overall operation of the station.
It doesn't delay the green light from--
You, you would have to have tournaments for people forcing the signals happening in the system, the operation, the occasional forcing, basically--
But it's got, it's got--
So, so, so basically, now, for instance, when you're forcing the saplet, this saplet, paddle green for pedestrians, white traffic is permitted to move from Twin Brooks, so there's no count, there's no vehicles that are allowed to force. And they have a protected area, that means when Twin Brooks extension is allowed to go, they're permitted, given the green time to force there. When Route thirty-six is running, they get the green time to force the side street. That's the way every symbol works in the state of Jersey at your time. When, you know, down with the other intersection, forcing the thirty-five to curve on the side streets to run, that's the way every intersection in the state of Jersey operates. So it's timed and worked into the operation of the traffic.
Can I go over my-- This is a reconstruction thing, to include this.
It's actually a full construction season, if we're starting, say, you know, if we're ready to go the end of this year, we have a destruction, it's trying to probably take a full construction season, which is in May, May, October, could potentially spill over. From a construction sequencing standpoint, we have some ten, ten or so stages of sequencing established with the department. It is actually a relatively easy project to construct, mostly because a lot of the infrastructure that's being constructed is on our site and is off of public roadways, so the initial phases of construction really would involve some border area protections, another disruption of traffic flow, with a lot of the infrastructure, the extension and everything being constructed, evaluating a traffic pattern on the wall. And then we go into a sequence of construction, and main day traffic flow during the time, you have some overnight work, and maybe a little bit of midday work limitations, avoid peak hours, but then we sequence in the staging of tie-ins. But all of that is detailed, and we spent a lot of time with their traffic, the traffic operations group, their, in terms of working out the staging and the logistics of how to phase the scent, maintaining traffic. So the sequence is detailed, and it was the way out. The setup, food portion of this project, to be able to be constructed, without any disruption of the traffic flow, all it does will be, is maintain what the eastern side.
A little known in this respect about food stores, in the future, in the next four to six years, two to three percent of grocery orders are going to be delivered via a company truck, as people are calling in for foodstuffs. We may not see it now, but especially in our area, I think eventually, you're going to see, I guess, the little pickup trucks picking up maybe twenty orders to go out. And I, it may cut back back traffic, but there's looking to be some congestion, but I think that's a way of the future also.
I know Mr. Sager thinks that, for sure.
I know he does, and I've been reading books on it, and so they, they are looking at that in food. So it's, you know, as much as being a meatloaf don't like it, but it's a, it's a way of the future in food stuff.
Theoretically.
I know.
Milk and--
Do you read a lot of less traffic?
Theoretically, I mean, it's just a--
Did you all consider, I think this is our traffic, is, is, did you all consider another access point going south?
Yeah, so, so as I indicated, I've been involved with this property one way or another since the nineties, and I've been telling you through all the years, various developers that look at the property, we're studying multiple ways of trying to get additional access, clean access, to the south. And it was only with, basically, this project, which is, quite frankly, is involved quite small, and we asked, what's this property? And based on that brain sizing, the ability to redevelop the extension and reorder the jug handles to gain the solution. Larger projects, this is never a larger project, so we're always looking at other opportunities, and we really couldn't find, it was all dependent upon some reconfiguration of existing jug handles, jug handles further to the south, in what it's a U-turn factor, mostly because most of the properties are developed, with their environmental constraints, and just was not a lot of opportunity to change that. So it's, as a result of where this project has come to today, which is really right size, it's a lot smaller than it was in the past, it's a characterization, and as a result, the infrastructure that we've developed narrows well as it was controlled. And as I said, actually, it's as large as I can show it.
Or are we covering toes?
No.
If it's--
No.
You're going to be back to toes.
I will.
Have you looked at the Apple Farm Road jug handle? There's obviously, if there's one south entrance, people are going to bypass that, possibly if they're going on bikes. It gets a little dicey now, I would assume that would create extra volume that jug handle has to calculate.
We, we did analyze that as part of the DOT's request, of we assumed, we have not assigned traffic, so we assumed traffic would be, we loaded all our traffic to the brick from the section here, designed to accommodate that traffic.
That's the same transportation, so a hundred percent of the traffic, although our traffic is unique.
So it is possible that some people that pass the site or actually see the site and decide to come back, dissipate to that, and seek a big percentage, based upon the analysis-- Basically, by the analysis we did for DOT, it changed the operation of that intersection and actually works pretty well. All of those signals in due time, back when we started, about two fifteen, I think, two fifteen by the department, and they gave a little more traffic interaction to it, so it could, it kind of act as some increasing at the toll booth traffic. Pretty much all was in the same sections, Tondo, Apple, Crestview, Monmouth, they were all part of a repositioned RTO, which gives them a little bit more gap, but it was not full of that, but a little more capability to add to the progress. And that was, I think, in fifteen, and the traffic was kind of...
On our house.
Because they changed the possibility of the intersection.
Did you see angle that I'm at? There are Kanes lanes now that turns, and it looks like there's a part that now comes off to the right. Where does that...
Kanes lanes is shadowing here where it just says right. So if you're coming north on 35, what you see is immediate takeoff for the jug handle, and Kanes lane comes in and backs you into that takeoff. So it's sort of a wide open, no pants landed there physically, and that's one of the things where it's correct. So that's, Kanes lane comes in, the jug handle is right there. We're actually building a right turn lane along the Bassett Furniture Site, which then feeds into the ninety.
Where, if I was to think of right off of 35 north, it's Kanes lane. Before I made a, if I wanted to go left into the new jug handle, it looks right there, like there's something that now goes off to the right.
There is. So as you come around, Kanes lane will open up two lanes, the left turn lane, so that that traffic can move out and not block any free traffic that wants to continue on Kanes Lane. So priority movement is coming in, continuing back to Kanes lane. This extension here is a relocation and extension of the driveway to Bassett Furniture, so we bring that into the intersection, and that comes through, of course, to the...
You're extending a parking lot in that area too, aren't you?
It's not a parking lot, we're, Bassett Furniture, basically, we're connecting the parkway to the new alignment of Kanes Lane. Ultimately, within the jug handle, the line shop, and the old sleep shop, we are connecting those internal to the shopping center. And the vacation of the DOT right away there, their parking and loading will be substantially improved, back to the center, and enhanced. And they'll tie into the center, so the benefit of the center traffic is what they're traffic.
That's the apartment house that are right there, we're talking about right now. Yeah.
Uh, Tom, sir.
Yes. Will you pull in with the new Kanes lane and through 35? Yep. And you get to where you need to go straight, or you need to face a left. Is, if you're just going to have to stop there, if there's traffic heading out to 35 or Kanes lane, should I...
So the reason we create the left turn lane is so that, like any roadway, you have a place to store somebody that might have to leave a second or two when they left against the opposing traffic. We have stop signs on the driveway from Bassett Furniture, and stop signs on the avenue for the Ford Shop Drive. So the through movement is still Kanes lane, and we take over and we create a left turn pocket for that traffic, so that it doesn't disrupt the ability of a vehicle to move back on the roadway.
I was wondering how they would interlink each other, but the stop signs make sense.
Right. So this is the main road, there's the side streets, same thing, connect the road, stop sign, control Kanes lane and street road on both ends.
Look to your anticipation of the traffic coming down in King's Highway.
In terms of volume...
I'm sorry.
King's Highway East.
Coming down, if they're going to make a right turn right there, do you think that's the way people are going to go if you're going on the 35 north?
Quite frankly, no, I think they're not finding it easy to get out of the traffic signal in the right. The traffic symbol, the way it's designed, doesn't have any chance to clear every single cycle lane, which is the most correct. So I think people will find it straight out of the set, but they have a choice, you know, the other way. For the most part, working King's Highway really provides contingent connectivity to local cargo driveways, as well as anything that may exist now or in the future in that section of King's Highway. But, you know, the operational level of service on that approach is simply, like, not a big problem.
The King's Highway East is going to, what construction is going on, to put this into place, I guess the last thing that's going to happen is that vacant section of King's Highway will be the last thing to go. How come you got an old water coming down the river up there, running down there? How are you planning on phasing the construction so that those people are not affected?
So, trying to think, general sequence of, there's really a whole full, general sequence of... In broad strokes, without, the first phase of construction, basically, as I said, is all on property. So we would be constructing Kanes lane within our properties without touching existing Kanes lane. We'd be building essentially just back to the tying point is, from Route 35, we would be building Shop Drive, we would be building lanes coming out to Route 35, to the outside of the existing jug handle. Along 35 itself, we would build the entire winding along the front, existing jug handle first phase of operation. We built a new jug handle, we built this whole section of King's Highway East, we built the old King's Highway connection towards the existing without touching any, so all that has been sitting there. And then the sequences, the next several sequences go into bringing the connections online. So for instance, what we'll have at Kanes lane, we'll do some flagging operations, like nightly night work, we'll come in, because there is some profile, brake changes in, will be a couple nights where getting into the flagging operations, we'll come in and fix it for shaving here and then tie in the section with the distance, so that's fairly easy process. Same thing will happen, we build a new jug handle, there'll be a short period of time, probably some night work, where we would close the jug handle, come in, tie in, and then we would open up this piece, basically, that piece becomes operation. The connect the road, because it was built up front, and that really doesn't affect any traffic as well. At the southern end, we build the jug handle, we built the King's Highway East realignment, we'll do some temporary traffic control, which will tie in the existing approach to the existing traffic signal operation, and in fact will bring the elements of the new side jug handle online. This will still be shut, and then get in and excavate, remove the old pavement, create the basin, finish the basin, and get that done. We would come in on Twin Brook's Avenue side and do a winding into the infield while maintaining traffic to create the approach lanes, so that we create a lane to accommodate the right turn, and then a next period to take out of action, existing near side right from Twin Brook's to South down 35. Then we get into that area and build elements of the jug handle, so that happens. And then sequentially what happens again is, with that element board we bring, we're building elements of new traffic signal, we bring the new signal online, do some traffic control, probably complete lane closures, so we'll have the jug handle complete. And what happens at that point in time is, with some flagging operations, we'll come from here, these are easier tie-ins, because we're going to grade routes a lot quicker than we do typically at Kanes, and basically just open up this section and tie in, so that, you know, it's country, there'll be some traffic control, some barrels, some flagging operations during daytime hours. So the sequence really thinks through, creating the infrastructure, and then doing the last steps of the tie-ins, minimizing the disruption to traffic at a constant time. It is actually, when we go through the logistics of it, surprisingly simple project to construct.
Took a little time, thank you. So your drainage is going to be a major portion before you can consider roads, putting all the stripes under Route 36.
Well, we use the existing drainage as we move through it, and then get the basin in place. The existing system will be maintained with proper protections and so forth in temporary times if necessary as we sequence our way through it, and get the basin online and then complete it.
Yes, the logistics are a lot.
Can I ask you, you have a pretty deep voice, so you're probably getting picked up. And you're, you're there, the mic's there, we're up there, and the mic's...
You got it all the way?
Well, as long as you keep your voice up, I think we're okay. I think you're doing fine, but, you know what I'm saying, just recognize there's got to be a pickup.
Got it.
Any other questions? You said you were waiting. Any questions from the phone? You've got your hands up, birthday glasses. I will get to all of you, so.
We have to do a couple, but, one, that microphone's got to go down.
Rosanna Sassa.
Two, we have to have a plan here, and you're talking to the witness, recognizing, again, you've got to contact someone with your microphone, keep your voice up, and you're going to... We have corporate word, just in case, but we really need to keep a record or a room on the desk.
Okay, uh, my first question is, did your study, sir, did your study extend to King's Highway East, going out of the shopping center and making a right on King's Highway East, as far as the traffic that would be involved in the number of cars that would be going that way? I mean, did you actually, is it a traffic study that you did, or...
Yes. Correct, in that study, yes, we did project traffic that would be going to east on King's Highway towards Route 36, towards E Road, all of which service residential areas that will likely travel to North and South.
Right, and when you, when you make a right, over the railroad tracks, there's a traffic light.
That's correct.
And you can go left and go out to 36, which, in my opinion, because I live on King's Highway East past the traffic light, but when I want to go to 36 or in that area, I won't go up 35. So I would think a good amount of traffic would go that way, and I would think that area there with the railroad to Earl, the light, the left turn, the right turn, I would think you're going to have to rethink that and reconstruct that as well. Do you agree?
Uh, I agree with regard to the traffic limit, where we expect a little teen percent of our traffic to be coming to and from E Road. Another, another percentage of traffic will be continuing along King's Highway East. We did, over the last several years, study those intersections, they're actually studied further, and they're on file with the township associated with the Old Brothers application, which goes further in depth. The results of our analysis show that those intersections will accommodate a traffic flow that we project in that direction, and there is no substantial changes in the operation of those intersections. We are increasing traffic, there will be some increases in delays, but they continue to operate at good levels of service. And I believe the results we studied by the township's consultant, he is keeping himself here.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you, because I think right now, there's a lot of traffic in that area to begin with, and I think if I were a person living there, I would make the right and go left to go to 36. And the other thing, and I think you all know my feeling about the Dine and Cinema, and when they leave, they're going to go out to 36 to, go that way, a lot of people are going to go that way to go to 36, and that's going to be all hours of the day and night. I know it's not a huge theater, but they're going to have many shows there. So that's one aspect of it that's going to put a lot more traffic on the King's Highway East. And by the way, I'm sure you's familiar with the road, correct?
I am.
Okay, you know it's a historical road, and it's, and it's horror country, and you're going to dump all these people that are coming from all areas of Monmouth County onto this lot road. Not all the people, but a lot of...
And trucks.
That's it, I really got the answer.
Can I say something? I'm going to add, I'm going to go here, I'm going to go to the state, I'm watching the door. C H E, that's right, I say, and your first name? Lauren, L A, you are... And, do you have a... Do you spread testimony that you're actually in the true double trip and everyone presents your presence? I'm just going to add to what she said. That is one of the previous roads in the... It really is, when you think about it. It's going to turn into another corner, where trucks going up, because it's an easy route from 36, Hosford, down to King's Highway, to List of Avenue, coming from Buck. I mean, we all move the middle town for, because it's called...
You're, you're... They're going after you.
Yeah, the question is, did you extend the study beyond the impact that it would have on Hosford Avenue and King's Highway East, and the fact that it's through days, you know, community with children and people walk come on Hosford Avenue? And I just see traffic there a lot as it is now, I cannot picture trucks, supply trucks coming to these shops now. So, I just, I mean, I'm not new to this process, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, I just don't understand it. I'm going to go.
Who's the question?
What was the question?
Yeah, similar to the last answer, what we use, yes, we have studies, the intersections of Morning Road, as well as Sleepy Hollow Road.
Uh, for an also?
We didn't analyze that particular intersection.
I think you need to add that, because it's very heavily traffic now, from people going through 36 to 35.
So the analysis showed that those intersections, if we look, continue to operate at good levels of service, be for better, and we did. And do expect traffic to travel to those areas as documented in the traffic, that's a very good statement that those are wraps. It is a audio circulation system, it is a collective interior, mono-terrestrial audio like circulation system, and it's headed to account of traffic flow, and the project will introduce traffic flow.
So did you study East, and what was the other one you studied?
We studied the first critical intersections where our traffic starts to dissipate, which would be King's Highway East traffic, say, Sleepy Hollow Road and East Road. We've also analyzed intersections such as Nobly Road, as well as Kanes Land and Drive, so there's a very...
Is there any way that we can add Hosford Avenue to that? There's a lot of traffic on there already, and it's a steepy little road, and I can only see it, I cannot imagine trucks going up, like delivery trucks going up there.
With the traffic delivery, King's Highway East probably has a posted, posted limit on it, that's remaining, I don't know the origination of that, or...
With the limit, you know?
What's on my limit? That is remaining, so we're not changing that, and we're requesting a court of exacation to change that, and that will be a council action anyway. We're going to change that anyway.
And how about speed bumps, are any of those roads under consideration?
We're not proposing any speed bumps or traffic that are coming initially.
One more. You're gonna have to stay near the microphone.
You said, I believe it said 80% of the study is mathematical, it's not typical, correct? 20% is hard?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so has any math or scientific factor been applied to traffic displacement due to this project?
Yes, the traffic analysis is done according to industry standards, according to state DOD standards, following proper methodologies for projecting traffic, assigning traffic, and estimating traffic as well as analyzing it. So that is all, that is all the science and the technical aspects of the analysis, yes.
Maybe what I mean by traffic displacement is different than what you're thinking. I'm talking about traffic displacement and behavioral changes that are gonna cause traffic, not just on 35. Traffic that's gonna build up on 35, when I say displacement, like it's being displaced into residential areas. Behavior will change. I've already changed my behavior since I'm here for 14 years, and that took out a major shopping center. I live in Twin Brooks. I had my young children's bus stop moved off of Woodland Avenue many years ago. Do you know why? Because people's behavior changes. People cut through Woodland Avenue to go to King's Highway on the other side of 35, on the north, southbound side, onto the historic section of King's Highway, right past this building, to get to the Parkway. I had my children's bus stop moved because people were flying on Woodland Avenue. I know you can't control the speed and enforcement, but the way you have a connector road in the back of this development, Woodland Drive is gonna become a connector road for people or a cut-through to the Parkway. It's also gonna dump that traffic onto the start road. They're gonna make a left onto Reddell Road, which, I don't know about you, but that overpass on the train tracks, it's like it's gonna fall apart. So I don't see any track, trail, it's gonna be an issue. To go that way.
They already do.
Nobody wants to go sit in traffic on 35, so they're gonna find ulterior reasons. That's what I mean by displacement. So has any consideration been given to this traffic displacement, if I'm explaining it?
Yeah, so.
I keep hearing, I keep hearing a lot of folk being addressed.
So the standards that we have for the transportation do not allow us to create a situation where we are creating such roadway congestion that people are gonna start to find that traveling in other residential neighborhoods, another model for residential neighborhoods makes any sense. We are creating the capacities necessary and meeting the standards that maintain operational levels of service that will not result in perjury to the neighborhood. It's just not gonna happen.
I need to understand how to keep, everybody keeps discussing, oh, King's Lane. King's Lane is the recycling center, right? Thanks, that's it. How about the people that move on Spruce, where you gotta worry, you're gonna hit a trick? Trucks, if you're going in a car and there's a truck line out, so wait, someone has to pull to someone's private driveway. The trucks are gonna find alternate ways to, not just residents, okay? Has any consideration been given to Wegmans? Wegmans is a destination. So you don't have just local people shopping here, you have people coming from Wauwahua. People are gonna take the Parkway to get here. Who's gonna wanna sit on 35? Has there been any consideration given to how people are gonna access the Parkway from here? You keep talking about northbound 35 stop, people wanna get to the Parkway. Has any consideration been given to how people are gonna access the Parkway from here? I'm a shopper. I come from, let's say I come from Neptune. I don't wanna go to the ocean line, I wanna go to Wegmans in Middletown, it's new. I'm gonna drive along 35, not on a Saturday. How am I getting from the Parkway to Wegmans, and when I'm done shopping, how am I getting from Wegmans to that home? Via the Parkway. Has that been considered?
Give him a chance.
He seems like he doesn't have an answer, so I'm gonna close.
From my perspective, he seems to be trying to think. So letting him off with his answer, please, who he asked you next.
Um, I didn't wanna go off the pitch. The answer is yes, that has been considered. It was a regional model developed, we had a thought where we did incorporate both the residential portion of this project in our analysis, we do it as well as the retail. The regional model does take into account regional traffic flowing to the site, traffic that will be in a single road, a redneck road, traffic that's moving 35 to the north, traffic that is going to the east on King's Highway or East Street, traffic that's going to the south, going to Presque, going to Apple. The regional models take that into account, take that into account with regard to the residential traffic by doing analysis, journeying work, demographics for Middletown, where people work that live in Middletown. We factor that in, that is fed in by the Department of Transportation. With regard to the regional details, we develop a primary market area, it's five miles in this case, where the primary traffic would come from, and we develop the demographic data for that to evaluate where traffic will flow to come. And again, that follows the DRT procedures, and embedded in standard in the industry. So the answer is yes, we're counting for that. One of the benefits of that in the road system is that traffic dissipates. It dissipates on all these different roadways, and as early as you get to the site, the less the traffic concentrations are. The other part of a shopping center, I didn't get into it before, with regard to traffic generation and the regional impacts, while yes, Wegmans may draw further distance, it does have a competing center, some preparation that'll help in that ocean. It does improve substantially greater distances. It is a shopping center, it serves its community. But one thing I would note from with regard to shopping center characteristics and generation is the shopping center itself doesn't create the patrons. The patrons are here, it's the residents that are here, that the shopping center is served. Those residents are permanently on the app for shopping and finding entertainment opportunities. This creates a, this creates a new opportunity, a new location, and absolutely, yes, it needs new traffic. The adjacent roadway system, and you move further from the site, we're basically redirecting, matching, locating another stop to people that are already on the app to shop, to get their groceries, to get their produce, to find an entertainment venue. So retail by its nature is capturing the residents that are already generating traffic in the region.
Well, I just, you know, I respectfully disagree, because if it's only the people from here shopping, traffic numbers really won't change.
Why do you clarify?
As I said, the region. Region is Middletown and. As I said, the region. Region is Middletown and.
That's correct. Hold on, hold on, you've got to stop all of the from the next second here. You get a chance, just like you're gonna hurt, to get up here and ask questions, but please.
Well, my response is, I really think it's, I understand this project is coming, you know, everything changes over time, I've gone to sleep. I think there's a better way of going about it, because we're really doing it to serve some of the people that live here. I moved here, I purposely did not move anyway near Route 109 because of the traffic. And you see where the night area is there. Don't let Route 35 become a 109, because you know what? I'm seriously considering moving if it gets to be adjusted to here. And I hate to do that, because it is a nice community, at least it has been, well, less than 14 years that I've lived here. And I'm really disappointed not to hear more about what's on the southbound side of 35, how the people here are impacted. Everybody is impacted, don't wanna take away from everybody, but, you know, people are gonna go through Twin Brooks, Twin Brooks to Spruce, Spruce to King's Highway, not King's Highway East, King's Highway. And you know, that's also the train station is, and that's also a route people take to go to Melton Ferry. So, thank you very much.
So, a couple of questions. You had kind of intro'd as residential, kind of commercial, and there's a wavelength control. What's to be done, of course, that the theater road and the floor, can we carry heavy semi?
Well, the Twin Brooks extension is designed for commercial traffic, as it provides a connector. Four ton wavelength sign starts the connector road and projects traffic or greatly trafficked and continuing to the east end of that. So if Trump does come back here, whether our truckers, when he owns a truck and they see the four ton, they will have an opportunity to move the road on the connector road in return for their product.
Just because it's signed there, I mean, there's nowhere else to go. It doesn't mean that the four ton length starts, I mean, you've already gone on the road. So I.
All of this is being built and handled, and we have, it's built and constructed. So it combines here with the existing, which is being rebuilt. So, okay, the existing road here, well, maybe they don't, and we go. This currently, it has pavement sections itself, and then you drop this. Probably something vertical form that has created the need to do the four ton length limit, by using pulverized structure that's substandard, usually that's the case, but don't exactly do that. So we are going to, now, ask.
The study you had spoken about, that's something that would be shared with the board and published in a public review. It's been looked at for several years, it's been filed here, probably three years. Is it, is it a public question? You had talked about sampling, you had talked about the traffic at different times of day, at different days of the week. What would the seasonality of that be, share it as well?
There is lots. Data was selected in November back in 2013, June of 13, used to be subsequently out there. Now, that's a separate case, but 2019, we were just out there, probably in January, February, in 16, 18, we were at September. So it's been varying throughout the years. The highest data was the November data that we got.
Yeah, I'd be curious for the December holidays, it seems quite busy around summer months.
Sure, you get to get deep periods sometimes, that the, are being, we are not looking for the people that are easily for the general represent, that the traffic is low on the highway. In this case, we seem to have found a very high IP that we can maybe go to start.
And then for the truck line, you had stated some kind of numbers that you had for different shopping centers, has Wegmans actually provided, based upon anticipated volume that they plan on doing the store? Do they know what volume they're gonna do in the store? How many trucks that it would take to supply that, or what phase of the way? And all their businesses as well, because I mean, some of them would require larger deliveries as well. And then you had used the Woodbridge Wayman as an example. The question is very quiet on the ocean one, it's maybe more inconvenient. How did demographics play all that? I would think that the Wegmans and Woodbridge differs in demographics that Wegmans, let's say, ocean, and Woodbridge Florida's volume?
No, I mean, in fact, I would think that the Woodbridge is much bigger, because it has access to greater residential population that would be available to shopping there, so versus a smaller parts of the street. Versus an area that has overall population, they need other options, so.
So like Tiffany's in Redback wouldn't do as well as Tiffany's in Woodbridge?
They maybe not. It's a, it's a rest of the understanding, and we're able to take a week personally. I think it's, I think it was very telling that we take the traffic count, compare it to the IP data that we're using, we find that it was more to the larger cars. So that's just a snapshot of time. I think it just goes to the more accurate data that we use.
And then when you had talked, you had kind of pointed out all the entrances. You didn't mention that these would be entrances to the shopping center already? Isn't you tank that the connector road also serves as entrances?
Yes, I did testify to that we had two public points of access, and they had two from the connector road. They probably are least intensive access points, and if they have the way to the truck access to these, I would testify to that.
And then leading up to this U-turn here, one of the, and I think they were kind of hinting on it, the right turn to go onto Twin Brooks, and then also the U-turn trying to get into it? And there's confusion with the single lane, is there another lane being added up to this intersection? Or is it just the one lane that you can make a right or go through as the U-turn?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am, please state your name.
I'm Candice King, and I'm here waiting. So, based on traffic, based on the traffic studies on King's Highway East, what was your traffic count on target?
At what particular location, what the existing traffic count?
What was the existing traffic count on King's Highway East, and which year was it?
Well, based on these studies, which are 2013, the existing flow on King's Highway East, you basically see in the morning, or in the evening, P-hour, in the work of one hour period. So P.M. P-hour, only 4:45 to, I don't think I have the exact peaks out here in the store, is 4:45 to 5:45, and then midday Saturday, 1:30 to 12:30. So heading towards Route 35 on King's Highway East, there was about 162 vehicles in the P.M. P. and 189 on Saturday, heading away from Route 35, that basically that right turn. It's 250 vehicles in the P.M. P-hour, and 185 on Saturday. And what I tell you is our recent counts that we have done, 2019, those are.
You did a 2019 count on King's Highway East?
We did, and the documented in a traffic study that's filed with the board and the other application that we heard in the application. The residential social.
All right, so the 2019 traffic count, we don't have that information, we don't have that?
I don't have it.
Your study's not based on that, or is it 2013?
Which is still relevant, and in fact, I just testified to, perfectly same as what we just saw.
Um, okay, what is your projection of what the traffic count will be on King's Highway East? We propose to tell, please, what's the projection?
Well, the first section of King's Highway East actually is, because of the way it's being reconfigured, it's Twin Brooks Avenue, it's being, is being realigned to the section of Twin Brooks Avenue between Route 35 and New Drug Junction, I can't figure those.
Well, I'm interested on the historical of King's Highway East, two lanes. Would it have, would it have significant increase in that section, please, the east side?
So to the, so if you go all the way to the east, call it past, no, past, call it past King's Landing Road, the project will add approximately in the P.M. hour in the westbound direction towards. direction towards the site, 166 vehicles per hour.
Extended?
Added. And on Saturday, about 232 vehicles per hour in the westbound direction. It will add 73 vehicles per hour, 113. The wall is going to be accommodated by passing through.
And that could be added to the two-lane historic road?
And the added to the existing roadway, which is a public roadway.
Two lanes.
Part of the bounds of the construction.
Okay. And just with the four-ton weight limit, can you help me understand what that equates to? Is that a 16-wheeler?
No.
It depends what it has in it, sure, but what is four tons? What does that kind of matter?
Four-ton of small truck, like a UPS vehicle, box truck.
It's more of a box truck.
It's more of a smaller.
Okay. Oh, and the other thing, the traffic study has not been made available to the public for years. I know I requested it, but no, yeah, I can't. When did the traffic study become available to the public? We've been asking. We always told it's not complete.
Well, no, we're talking about his traffic study. The Atlas His Traffic Study has been there on file.
Did they update it?
Wasn't, uh, sure. You think they updated? Not really. That one, that one, the answers are the same.
Well, what's the difference between, I know we've all been asking for traffic studies and we were told they were not complete.
We were talking about.
So, what is that traffic study written this?
There are traffic studies that have filed since they filed it up. It's dated, involved by the by, February 2016. So, that's been on file with the board for approximately three days. You're talking about the traffic study done on the direction of the board with Adam Cather who's here in St. Mary's. That's what we're talking about.
And they were always told it's not complete. We can't see that it's not complete. How long ago was that?
Couple of weeks ago.
I just didn't want to, I, thank you.
And that's what made the bill.
Yes, with the whole, yeah, but I almost said the other. And you're providing pedestrian crosswalk on Route 35. Can you just describe the width of Route 35 there? Because I know you've talked about deceleration lanes, 15-foot bike lanes. So, can you just describe the lanes that someone's wanting to come?
Sure. Pedestrian crossing. The pedestrian crossing of 35. So, today what happens is, is push button until they cross into the median. There's no handicap ramps, there's no sidewalk in the median. So, designing correctly, pedestrian crossing, which more sidewalks. So, there's a crossing element of the 35 northbound lane, the handicap ramp. There's three lanes of traffic, the 15-foot lane, the 12-foot lane, and 12-foot lane. And then there's a handicap ramp, new sidewalk being constructed in the median. So, basically about 30, probably about 40-foot of pavement crossing on the northbound side, and then you come across, protect on the sidewalk with the median. And on the southbound side, the three lanes that are there today, plus the two wide shoulders are crossed by the pedestrian at that location. So, that is the pedestrian route that is created.
Do you have any?
Yes. I just asked, just could we talk that much? Yeah, because you're talking to the board. I don't know what's getting picked up on there. I'm assuming that, I'm assuming it's getting picked up. Well.
And then the 15-foot bike lane, where does that get into the project, historic?
So, basically throughout the site, for instance, along Route 35, we have 10-foot shoulders, but then as it comes up onto the site, we go 15-foot curb lane design. Along Kings Highway East, the curb lanes are all 15 feet until the tie-in point along the connector road. The connector road is 30 feet wide, 15-foot lane in each direction. And then Kings Lane realigned is also 30 feet wide, 15 feet in each direction, except for some transition areas. So, all of that is accommodating quite compatible on a wider curb lane.
So, that's going to be kind of self-contained because that 15-foot's not going to flow into up 35 or up Kings Highway East.
We're not correcting the whole township. We're building a new infrastructure to our standards.
All right. Okay, you mentioned need of yellow highlights on a plan. Are there some, is some of the yellow highlights new drawings? I mean, from what the board has seen previously?
No, the highlighted yellow areas are new pavement areas or reconstructed pavement areas or repaved areas. That represents basically the primary road construction areas.
But it's not new? Not new?
It reflects what is approved by the Department of Transportation and what is very good construction.
Yeah, that's the other thing I don't understand. Is it typical to get DRT approval prior to getting a planned for approval, or is that unusual?
No, it's not unusual. Depends upon length, time, and project may evolve. I mean, usually, same with rules, a local rule is quicker than the DRT rules. In this case, the local rules are way over the DRT rules, which is quite an easy process to apply.
So, 10 phases, you mentioned 10 phases of construction for the new road. And is there, with Kings, with Kings Highway East having new construction, do you think that Kings Lane to the connector road might become what some of the local residents are going to have to use when Kings Highway East is being constructed, when Kings Highway East is closed at a certain point?
We're not expecting any extended closure. We think that more can be done with lagging operations, whereas in the periods of time when traffic is lower, where we may alternate traffic as we do tie-ins. But we're not anticipating any closures against my original tie-in, getting through the sequence. There will be some, you know, some, there definitely will be construction, as with any construction private, need some delays of cones, barrels, and work areas, but the most part will be developed as sequencing that can change traffic flow, the motorist race is that possible.
I guess, because I'm wondering, just want to clarify, connector road to Kings Lane, traffic could be diverted on that to give Kings Highway East the ability to be constructed?
It could be an option, actually. I didn't think about that, but if we build connector road early on and bring it online, it might be a beneficial component that we could use if, for some reason, maybe a short-term diverted. I have not seen any long-term closures of Kings Highway here. If anything, it's hours, maybe day or night, something like that. They get the comments to work correctly. The more complicated one is actually Kings Lane, because Kings Lane has some grade changes to it. So, we actually have to build up the pavement, doing that at Kings Highway, more meaning existing grade at Kings Highway. So, there's probably two really tough challenges. The Kings Lane one, which we think we got right. And then what we bring is jug handle, transitioning that you're there, that's going to take a little coordination.
And I guess just that this whole Kings Highway East being a two-lane historic road, being used for this type of project seems completely great. It doesn't seem like it fits. State your names from.
Laura Adams, PNTT. A couple of questions. My first one is Kings Highway East right now, the problem about it, 35, 40, or absolutely horrendous. And I would like to call meeting about a township, the way I hear. If they can, if they properly maintain the roads now, it's going to happen, though there's all this additional traffic coming in. And what is the DRT standards for maintaining the roads like this?
Well, there's always maintenance about, the wall is the main infrastructure. Only roads will be new, paved, have a 20-30-year lifespan associated with it, somewhat building, they. I don't know, but the current cap, cap, plan is to be paving a road that is related to prioritizing whatever building they have on. But maybe it's not current, there's a time, but that's something that's called general cap, cap, so, and have a program that they give on the real basis.
So, how far of Kings Highway East are you guys going to pave it?
Basically, to Nobwood, it will be, pretty much, as Nobwood will be probably about Nobwood or overweight, and then everything to the east of there, Twin Brooks will be over Nobwood.
Just to expand on the gentleman's comments earlier about looking at the Woodbridge versus Ocean waitmen's, was that a suggestion of waitmen's, or was that your own decision?
I just decided that, at the opportunity to do it, to start, to modify it, I would do, he said, "Go ahead." I did. And I figured that this question would be, would he respond to it?
I think it is helpful, but I think to his comments earlier, like, there's certainly probably much different economic status from certain communities that are going to end up coming to Monmouth versus, or Middleton, rather, versus Ocean County. So, I just think that's, instead of being convenience versus, I presume, really. I just think, like, so, so, people that go to the Ocean waitmen's right now, or people from those slower shoes, there are other communities that might be more well-off, so to say. So, I think that's, all those people are going to travel to Ocean or go to Littleton. So, I just think it's, nothing's wrong with it. I just think it's free for traffic. I just don't know how I heard it is with Woodbridge.
How does that correlate to sales? How does that correlate to sales, more or less?
Whoa, 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 you don't get the shout-out question. Remember, you ordered it up here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The Woodbridge Center is a highly active site. It's a very heavy traffic area. It is a successful center. Waitmen will be there otherwise, and I don't see any differentiation between that site and other waitmen sites around the circle. I think it was a good sample.
And just one last question. You talked about adding 2.1 miles to the sidewalk. Is that going to marry up? So, on Kings Highway East right now, the sidewalk actually goes from Heritage Drive heading towards Route 35, and it actually stops at 398 Kings Highway East. I don't know the lot number of lot number of that house, but it's right before where like the houses, which is, I believe where this property is. Are you going to actually connect that, or is there still going to be a disconnect from that sidewalk?
I'm not sure if we got your landmarks correct, but let me explain where the sidewalks are. So, there is the sidewalk that exists along, along both Kings Highway, the highway extending out to 35. That will remain. We are constructing new sidewalk from the connector road out to Route 35, continuously all the way out. We are creating crosswalks that connect to the existing sidewalk in front of Nobwood and then continue on to the west. The connector road has sidewalk on both sides of it, the entire length of Route 35 frontage will have sidewalk along its entire frontage. The only disruption being in front of the Horizon stores. The only reason why that disruption exists is you go right away there and the sidewalk wants to be that apartment. So, you have to eliminate their parking. Otherwise, we are actually building sidewalk in front of Sleep Shop, we're building sidewalk in front of the appliance center and Kings Lane, so there is full sidewalk connectivity. So, if you wanted to walk from Panera Bread, you would be able to get onto the sidewalk, walk to Jug Handle, cross that traffic signal, walk up Twin Brooks Road and continue on and reach Nobwood or on to Kings Landing. So, you would be able to physically walk Kings Landing and safely, have a safe route to Panera Bread.
And so, you have the sidewalk on the west side of Kings Highway East and your?
There's a pedestrian crossing at the connector road that gets you to the west side. We are now extending sidewalk on the south side. So, the north side has sidewalk that's remaining, and all of our sidewalks have crosswalks that connect to that continuous sidewalk that is on the north side of Kings Highway East.
So, there's going to be a break in between the sidewalk here and what's existing on this side down by, like, how far down is the pedestrian?
The crosswalks are right at the intersection. Illegal crosswalk locations are clearly not part of the intersection. So, if you wanted to continue on to those residential developments that were constructed to the last major main street, you would have to walk down the north side and ultimately reach Kings Highway. That would be. That's beyond our run.
Thank you.
Name's Dana Hough?
H-A-U-F.
First, we should have all the work on the pedestrian walkways and bicycle paths. Just had a couple of questions on the study methods. You already mentioned that school buses, you can't plan everything, but the school buses coming back to Kings Lane at the end of the day, those work are part of the DRT study. So, and you mentioned you did look at Supermarket Times. I was worried about Movie Times. I didn't hear those represented. There's a movie theater in the plant, and so when they, you know, when you go to any movie theater, there's a big rush coming in and going out. That's the Movie Times.
And generally, those are later in the evenings, when the road designs are down. Certainly, if you have a design for the heat of the roadway, that's the vice infrastructure for how they close. The other thing is.
How about the weekends?
Set down the weekends. Be designing the heat of the roads so that you have the infrastructure there for the walking. The other thing is, you know, St. Theater, you know, this theater is actually confused with a theater of all, the major multiplexes. This is a bobbing-type entertainment theater. It has dinner theater, food, that are smaller, seating capacity, there are thousands of seats, there are hundreds of seats. So, it is not like a major complex. It is, it's a domestic.
So, does it, hundreds of cars would be coming out of those meantime?
No, if you've got, if you've got, if you've got a screen theater with roughly 286 seats, you've got theaters that are running, maybe 75 seats in a theater and two people, three people, four people per bar, it's not, it's not the complex of the old, it's not the multi-16 screen movie center.
Last question on the key there. How the toll roads, what's the volume of the key? Was that included in this study, or is this particular just for the shopping?
So, the application before this, this evening, is for the shopping center. However, that being said, all of the roadway design, all of the deal of the permitting that was funded by the applicant before this evening incorporated in fine projections for the residential development. So, all the infrastructure is designed to accommodate that residential traffic.
The figures you've given, were those for the additional vehicles, you know, for example, Kings Highway? Were those the additional vehicles for the shopping, for shopping and the residential? So, that includes the residence. You mentioned that there was, in the past, there had been studies on getting additional turns from the northbound. turns from the northbound. Could you describe a couple of those and what the costs for them were?
I don't have the cost. You know, one of the, one of the ones that you've all are.
Seven, eight, three years.
We have looked at cost standpoint in a long time, but one of the obvious ones is the ability to try to do a reverse loop at Woodbury.
Where the professional building is.
Correct.
Where the professional building is.
Or a near side loop where the restaurants are and the Bernardo Shopping Center and obviously those will require acquisition of properties, probably multiple properties. Even just the professional building, you have the people around it. So into a virtual properties involved.
And for electric, it would be Kings Lane.
And I think there was some environmental, part of the core was environmental. So it was never, the ability to get those properties wasn't on the table and doesn't provide the opportunity.
I understand that. I just wanted to make a comment to the board that those kind of costs would be, should be under consideration as a planning brief if there's one lane doesn't hold the traffic. I was just taking a quick count. Northbound, you did a great job. There's 10 different ways to get people in here. You know, you got Kings Lane, you got Waltz, you know, you got the new, the new road, you got Verizon, you got another new road, you got the jug handle for the semis. 10 ways to get in here with multiple, multiple lanes. But you got one lane for all that traffic. And if you go to, you know, that best box jug handle, if you get a vendor vendor into those thousands of cars, one vendor, you gotta know what the backup is now. It's for one lane, you know, if you get any, any bigger, you get a few more cars here. But I, Edison, Woodbridge area because of the traffic, the, the Wake Mans there has got, it's going on to Route 1. It's like an eight lane, 10 lane road. And then that access road doesn't have, doesn't have a couple hundred feet. It's got half a mile, a mile and four, five lanes to turn left or right. It's a different respect. So these costs should be considered as something that might have to be mapped down the road by the township if that one lane doesn't work out and you know the backup. Similarly, you mentioned it, I know it's not generating traffic, but the, the water on the run, it's just like traffic. It's all volume and flux. They're fixing all the things that need to be fixed here, but it comes out here where it's our problem. And we've already got flooding here. So just another second, we've already got the flooding here and then it's our problem to fix the cost. So that's what I just wanted to mention.
He's here discussing the traffic.
He brought it up and it's not great. It's great that you're fixing flood that, but it increases the flow to us when it floods out now. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rose Marie, R O S E, N A R B E, Newberry, N W E R Y, Nine Kennedy Court and Kings Landing. Just one second. Elizabeth. I wanted to know, how did you determine when the peak hours were?
So when we conduct traffic counts, the counts, you generally know that peak hours on weekdays are there at first on time in the evening between 4:00 and 6:00. And on Saturdays, the day hours sometimes at 3:00, 3:00. We set the traffic counts for certain of those times. They're also supplemented by one of that traffic reporter, you can see Route 2, which continues. So we use that data and then we analyze that data to find the highest one hour period. And in general, in this case, it's 4:45 to 5:45. Quite likely that the hour in each day, I think, we quarter or magnitude of that volume.
Yeah, I got that. It's just, I've experienced a lot of traffic around the school let out hours. And so I was wondering if your initial studies had looked at what that was compared to what your result, your result of peak hours?
No, certainly schools, particularly if you're in close proximity to the school, does have a school peak and a school impact. But during those time frames of development, you know, residential development is actually generating lower volumes. So your combined highest peaks are generally your commuter hours. It's unusual with school hours while, particularly in close proximity to school, you can have influence factors associated with a quote unquote let out. If you get out, that's a three timeframe that has a specific impact associated with the school. It is not a time period that would coincide.
So that's, so you made that decision from your experience that school hours would not be the peak hours for this study?
That's correct.
Okay. But I just wanted to understand that because I don't agree with it, but I wanted to understand this. I don't understand, and this is proposed from the board. So we have three different traffic studies. We've got, or proposals, we've got this one, we've got what the board got within the last couple of weeks that I've read. And then there's something else that's with the Toll Brothers. I'm confused.
You have this traffic study here. You have, you have heard the board's got their study.
Okay, I'm blank.
But the Toll Brothers application is up. Testify then. But I did hear a second is that the Toll Brothers numbers are in this study.
Yeah, I, I heard that. But the question, some of the questions I want to ask is further up Kings Lane. So I need to wait for the Toll Brothers. That's common.
Possibly, I don't understand.
Possibly. Yeah, that's what's getting, that's what I'm a little confused on. So Nobwood is going to meet up with this intersection for the connector road. You don't show it on this map, but isn't that where they're?
It's not direction lines. It's offset. Nobwood is to the east of the connector road intersection.
Okay, all right. So those residents will be impacted by the traffic coming on the, from the connector road to them? I mean, I just, if they're not even connected, I'm confused about how they're going to be impacted and how the traffic is going to flow for them.
So yes, there will be an increase of discussion traffic along, along the Kings Highway East. However, similar to the connector road, our analysis shows that all of those drivers in the connector road will continue to operate at good levels of service.
Okay, all right, I got it. So, so they'll be, all be managing stop signs, but they'll be, they'll be offset because the two, the two don't, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So is a similar thing going to happen with the connector road that's in the Toll Brothers plan that's going to line up with Kings Landing entrance?
That's probably more appropriate to set for that.
For that application.
Which is only one, get off the book.
Right here, but there is another road in the other site then. All right, I'll figure that out later. Figure that out later. All right, I got it. And the one, one thing, I want to follow up with the drainage issue. I don't know where all that discussion about the drainage is, but if it's all flowing into one big pipe, this is a lot more concrete than what has been there before. So I would think there'd be a huge additional volume and that is the point of this discussion either.
Correct.
And when can I bring that one up?
When the engineer was here, who was already testifying.
So I missed that opportunity?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I have just one more question.
Over here against the wall.
You're going to need the microphone.
I just got a couple of questions for you. Are you aware that the marketing material in several iterations earlier on indicated that the shopping centers draw and easy access from our state parkway?
I am not specifically aware of the marketing material. That's probably.
Several iterations did indicate fewer easy access from our state parkway. Are we agree with that? Any of these improvements, are any of them comprised of any takings?
They are several third party properties that are involved and the owners of those properties have been modeled in the process and have reached agreements with the owners. All of the improvements can be constructed within properties that are being controlled by the owner applicant and/or have been obtained by agreement.
So you have signed agreements with all of the parties that are involved in takings?
And mine is.
And could you describe takings for the applicants?
Yeah, it's, it's actually very minor. Bassett Furniture was kind enough to work with the applicant to allow us to create the right turn lane along Route 35. So there is adjustment of their property line on their frontage, allowing that link to be completed. And really the remaining are not really land acquisitions. They're more agreements in the configurations of these infield properties that allow them to, to have better access and ultimately better layouts, only particularly in front end. And then the remaining, there's a course access easement. Oh, actually no, we're dedicating land now to Wells Harbors or actually giving Wells Harbors some land to get their access squared away. And that's it.
Since you're up here, you can take.
I'm sorry. It's kind of hard to, the wires are not that long. If you can move the stand over, that might work.
Okay, well actually, the connector road intersection Kings Highway East, you can take crosswalks there. Is there a speed limit standard for crosswalks? I think that's 40 miles an hour.
It's 35.
It's 35?
Yes. There is no speed limit standard. It is a intersection.
And is that a four way stop sign?
No, no, the connector road has a, has a stop sign on it. And the each corner of the connector road is a course, it's a pedestrian crosswalk. In this case, we're actually strapping the crosswalks and creating landing areas for them. We are also going to score lighting at that location. And the sidelines along Kings Highway East are substantial in effort for those crossings to do this.
So that raid that's coming over from the east side is not affect that?
That's about 1,300 feet to the east of us. It doesn't affect that.
And is there a left hand turn lane allowed of going westbound on Kings Highway East down to the connector road?
Yes, you can take a left.
Is there a left hand turn lane, sir?
No left turn lane, no. We are not widening at that location Kings Highway East. We're naming it as existing course access.
So people, all folks that are going to be coming from east on Kings Highway East will be queued up here for people that are taking the connector road, going to?
They would.
Going to Kings Lane or?
If there's an opposing vehicle, they would, and any signalized intersection, they would stop and wait to make the left. We are not, we are not projecting any substantial queue or delays in making that movement or they can proceed on to gain their access to the intersection, which is the primary way to the shopping center.
My question was lower here, it was up here. So can all, all traffic coming from the east on Kings Highway East?
They either make a left of the connector road, but there is no left turn lane, or they can continue on, make the left, gain access to the shopping center.
Is there any shoulder access to get around people making a left on the connector road?
At that location, the roadway will be 15 feet wide. So we are not providing shoulder at that location. So you would basically wait for vehicles to.
And?
We are not projecting the delays.
The traffic volume on Kings Highway is sufficient? Is it allowed for that?
Yes.
At peak hours?
Yes.
Let's see. School bus access. If people are the school bus depot, they're paying and also all municipal vehicles. And would it not be sense if they're going southbound to use the Twin Brooks and then the connector road to access their, either the dump or the Apple Park or their school bus yard?
Sure. That's, that's one of the purposes of the connector road.
Yeah. How many cycles does it take to clear vehicles per cycle of the Twin Brooks?
I'm not sure I follow that question.
Well, okay, when the length's free, how many vehicles go through?
Depends upon the, the time of day. The signals respond to the influence of the traffic.
So the signal is so long, and this is your profession, I believe, how many vehicles can proceed on that green light?
Depends upon the time of day and the volume, the band that shows up at any particular time of the time of day. The traffic signal modifies itself from a minimal timing to a maximum timing and has different timing records throughout the course of the day. So we are projecting several hundred vehicles an hour on our approaches. You know, in some cases, 800 vehicles an hour on some approaches with lanes provided and signaling, it's a company.
Okay. What is the distance from approximately Twin Brooks to Wake Mans? Is it quarter mile or something?
I don't know. I haven't done that before.
Roughly quarter mile, almost half mile. Is there going to be any kind of signage to indicate for people to, that this is, Twin Brooks is where they turn if they're coming southbound on 35 for this shopping center?
The shopping center as part of the site plan application does have signage.
Is there a signage for people coming from, what percentage of the traffic is coming southbound on 35 that's being drawn to the shopping center?
Probably about 38% of the percentage of traffic.
So, okay, the 38%, okay. That's a fine number.
It will be commercial signage as part of the site plan application, as any shopping center has. Mr. Ben testified to on the previous applications. I don't have that information before me, but probably will just have the signage.
Well, I understand that. I was wondering, as a motorist, if you're coming southbound, where you go where to turn? So you don't end up at Apple Park.
The same way you find every other commercial place throughout the state of Missouri, you can even navigate your maps and you know where you're going and you know the routes. I mean, that's.
Or, or you're supposed to see a quarter or half mile ahead that, that Wake Mans is there.
We hope our signage does provide some, some ability to see that, but this is a center that, you know, people will be using shop. And if you're a Wake Mans customer, you basically learn what Wake Mans are, most of us know where to shop every day.
Are you familiar with the idea that people will bypass certain jug handles when they're congested, such as Home Del, and try to go to turn point? Will they in turn go past it and turn their, their board market? As a bypass?
People do different things as drivers. I, I take a different route to work than my do it days when you live that home. You know, it's people take the way they're coming. As part of the exit flows of traffic flow and the entrance of, of traffic flow, you know, how to move. I'm comfortable with a particular route, you might take a different route, but we've designed to accommodate the flows. This has been designed to accommodate the flows and meet the standards that were required to meet and collaborate quickly. Is there a possibility that there'd be some percentage of motorists coming southbound, particularly growing ones that are not familiar with the center, that might miss the jug handle and turn around and not go? Or if, yes, will that dissipate over time as people will get to know the center? Yes. And will the infrastructure accommodate it? Is designed to accommodate it? Yes.
One final question for you, this is an easy one. Is this a four-way stop?
No, previously, a three-way stop because it's only outbound from the signal.
So it's only outbound?
Yes.
So if you were taking the jug handle to go to, what, the power wash or a second place here, you make a right, you have to make a left, then you stop at the stop sign, wait for traffic to sort themselves out, and then hit the stoplight? Did I describe that correctly?
Yes.
Would you think of that as the most efficient way to handle traffic at that? Or is that designed to drive traffic into Wegmans?
No, it's the efficient way to handle traffic. In fact, that very movement, the DOT asked us to, to encourage. We looked at several different alignments and this is something the DOT has used in different locations successfully, so there is no commercial or hidden agenda here. This is the best way to handle the traffic, create the best queues, approach to the traffic signal and the most efficient way to move the various types of volumes that we need to move. So that's really all.
I think we refer to the forward thoughts about DOT. Thank you very much.
I lived at 46th and 31st Way in Newtown, New Jersey for the past 10 years. And I've grown up nearby in Aberdeen Township, and so I'm very familiar with the highway and what it was like when we had the cup factory and a wagon farm compared to what we have today, which is night and day. So, I reviewed the STANDTECH study that's been prepared for the township and I have a couple of questions that I'd ask you in comparison to that. In that study, it was mentioned that when they went out to do a, an assessment of what the traffic, peak traffic was like as a spot check for your report in 2017 on Saturday, due to a lack of queuing and congestion during the Saturday peak period, it states that they didn't provide any information about that. Did your study find that there was no queuing or congestion during Saturday peak hours?
I'll let, when he testifies, I think it's a matter of prescribing his report, writing his report, and I think you're missing imagine. They did have accounts in 2017, my understanding, or the results of those, PM accounts and Saturday accounts, and I think what they reported was the 2013 data continued to be the appropriate design lines and my knowledge, I read in the report, we utilized the 2013 data, back to base models, started to guide and evolve the expectations. They had all that available to them in order to check me also and verify also the rule that I've made, but I think it's missing imagine what he's...
Well, I'm quoting from the report right now. So, the report is indicating that says, due to a lack of queuing and congestion, that this information was not provided. So my question was, did your study also find that there was no queuing or congestion during the Saturday peak hours?
I don't know the context of that, I think that's better left to Mr. Catherine.
Well, my question is to you. Did your study find that there was no queuing or congestion during Saturday peak hours on the highway?
Partially documented the traffic lines that exist on the highway system, leveled service on the roadway system more relatively good on a Saturday, and we utilized those data to protect the flow which created analysis. I think we followed by queuing congestion, which created a database based upon existing other traffic.
Okay. Well, I can tell you that during a Saturday peak hour, there is significant queuing and congestion along the entire highway from not just in this site. Right now, I see just, the only discussion is localized right in front of the project. The issue extends much further than this. And I hope that the board takes that into account and taking a long view of what's happening here beyond just what's happening on the watch of site itself. So that's, my next question is sort of similar to that, is that currently the Twin Brooks Road feeds to Spruce, and this is basically a path through which people cut to King's Highway and cut northbound or southbound from 35, come down to King's Highway, take Spruce up through and go to shopping center where we have across the street from this site. So was any study done as to what traffic is going to be going through Twin Brooks through Spruce, which is a 25 mile per hour rate, but people are speeding down at a 40 miles per hour rate of access?
So the answer to that is with the infrastructure that we're building, now I expect that to be a cut through, we did evaluate it, we evaluated, evaluated it using valuation tools that you can have through the world that takes into account the time traffic flow during peak hours. One of the tests we did was a flow from Church Street on King's Highway to Circus Linkers, both using the direct route on 35 versus going through Spruce. Just for information purposes, the route along King's Highway directly to 35 through the Tindall, Twin Brooks Jug Handle into King's Highway is roughly 1.2 miles and it's a three-minute ride to try to go through Church, try to go through Spruce to sprint to Twin Brooks. It's a long route, about 1.9 miles and about a five-minute ride. We are not creating a change in the operating condition of the road such that it's going to be more desirable to spend additional minutes traveling through the residential neighborhoods. The reverse is also true. It's about a one-mile ride to make a right for 35 and go through the intersection with King's Highway, then the road. And again, again, it is about a 1.8 mile ride to go through the neighborhood and is a difference again of two minutes, three minutes versus the direct route, five minutes to go through the neighborhood. So your navigations are not going to direct people to go through those neighborhoods. Certainly if you live in those neighborhoods, those are the routes you're gonna take. Certainly if you have other reasons to go through the neighborhoods, that is why you take your navigation and reward the results of the improvements, but doing is not gonna encourage or induce traffic through those neighborhoods.
The STANDTECH report also indicates that they looked between Harmony Road and Oak Hill Road, Chapel Hill intersection, and found that there was going to be increased congestion occurring at the Oak Hill Chapel Hill Road intersection just south of this area and that it was essentially not feasible to do anything about mitigating that increase of traffic. Do, does your studies concur with that?
It does. We had identified some potential signaling changes down there that were shared with DOT. They're probably leaving it alone at this point in time, but I do agree that that is probably one of more constrained intersections in the carers. It's further removed from the site, as I testified before, the further you get from the site, the more dissipated on traffic impacts on the battery creation actually was also shared with Department of Transportation.
Okay. And I would just like to end that, and I hope that the board takes a viewpoint that even an increase in the traffic slightly is a problem, that we should be planning forward for the future to decrease the traffic in the area that is right now. Really, thank you.
Your question, you sort of customizing that, shall be turned off, please.
I'm David Anderson. Credit by Floyd Stewart. NRCC has basically said that traffic on 35 is 37,000 cars a day. And probably even lower. Okay. And 38% of that is southbound, so that's 12,000 cars. Correct? I'm just using simple math, I mean, if you're 80% science and 20% art.
The second part of that statement, I don't know that...
Well, you said 38% is south, that's what you told the gentleman earlier.
38% of our traffic is coming from the north of our traffic.
About 38%.
Coming to and of our traffic. The volumes that are reported of NRCC, that's existing two-way traffic.
That's all I'm concerned about, that's the baseline.
That's the baseline.
At this point in time.
So, can I ask, can I ask? You were talking, he's talking, and they're...
I'm starting for, okay? So just wait for the opportunity to talk to him. So, the point that I'm just gonna come to is Wegmans is going, you know, it's a very well-respected privately-owned supermarket chain. In 2018, we recorded 9.8 million in sales and 98 units. That's $100 million per year. They're open from 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM every day of the week, 265 days a year. That's $2.8 million per day. It's 14,000 transactions in a day to make 2.8 million, using $200 to see a transaction. That's a lot of cars coming into this particular section. Are you, are you gonna be able, does your current traffic plan for the south going on East Kings Highway, is it going to be able, actually able to handle the traffic just using one store in the center that generates 14,000 transactions in a day?
Yes.
How do you measure?
As I testified to, we have prepared a graphic analysis, a graphic projection to reflect the nature of the shopping center and traffic that it generated during its peaks. We have created necessary infrastructure to accommodate that traffic.
So on East Kings Highway earlier, you were saying there were somewhere in the area of a couple hundred cars during, on an average day during the peaks.
Hours.
Yeah, right. He does. So we could say maybe through the entire. So if we have 14,000 transactions just alone at Wegmans, and a large portion of that is probably going to be coming from the south, and the only way to generally access is through the new roundabout that you're building. So, we're going to be looking at probably 1,500 cars or more during peak time trying to get in, is that correct?
No.
Why not?
Because the traffic is coming from multiple different directions.
I'm not talking about...
It's coming from multiple different directions. We have to get projections as to what we want specifically in the graphic study and the additional lanes that we're adding for the stabilization or to accommodate that people have encountered that we've identified as affected.
Which includes King's Highway East?
Yes.
Going through the circle? The new circle, as you can chart. I'm from, I mean, from DC to circle in DC at Chuckano.
Yes.
I mean, I hope you're right. And I hope the board considers that he may be underestimating the actual traffic that's what you're going through there. I mean, how do you think about the trucks that are gonna have to supply the Wegmans?
Yes, you have.
Now, you mentioned a ton of trucks up here. Is that correct? All right. You know, if that much of your, you know, but in a month, in a week, $14 million just out of merchandise, that's gonna be a number of trucks to resupply. And that's just Wegmans alone.
So I'm gonna emphasize a little bit of information, a couple of things before I ask my question about this southbound jug handle. Right now, the traffic that uses this southbound jug handle is Newtown North. Anybody who wants to make a U-turn between Tindall Road and New Monmouth Road to go to any other retail, also to go to Spirits, to Wells Fargo, to go to King's Highway East, or to go to Defenset King's Road, that's now. With this whole project, and we, another thing we had, and we haven't discussed this, is the residential. It's not just Wegmans, it's all of these parking spaces, how many are there? Thousands? Parking spaces? How many, all this retail plus the hundreds of residential units that are going in? That is added to the jug handle. The retail, and also Kings Lane. Kings Lane never used to use that jug handle before. So now my question is, trying to follow up, we'll get a little bit more specific information from what these other questions have been asked. Have you made any projections as to how far the traffic will back up at the southbound jug handle to get into this complex? Not just this complex, but to take a U-turn, to get to Newtown North, get to all the other places on the other side of the highway? How far does the backup project, how far do you project the backup to be at peak times?
We, as I testified to briefly earlier this evening, queuing analysis was part of our evaluation with Department of Transportation. And most parts, the queues are contained within the 990,000 feet of queue areas or area that is provided on the additional lanes, except for people that get trapped before the signal, you know, the signal turn for the southbound is queuing the right turn lane, but each and every cycle, the side street clears.
Can you give us a landmark as to how far back that traffic will actually go to? Will it go to King's Highway?
There are.
Will it go to a municipal complex?
In fact, the traffic happens in flow, so there are periods, like five-minute periods, ten-minute period, within a peak hour that we need to focus down to our analysis, our queue analysis actually focuses on the worst 15-minute period of the peak hour. And, you know, during that timeframe, I would suspect that during the peak hour, we may see, as we see today, a queue around the jug handle. There, as you come southbound on Route 35, the right lane is gonna be more heavily traveled, but it's a moving lane, it is outside the two blue lanes, and you may go cycle through the intersection with a program traffic cycle that operates at a good level of service. See, by definition, that level of service means cycle by cycle, traffic is generally clearing, the views are clearer. So, you know, I don't think you can see that at the worst period, some similarities might experience today, but somebody gets into the right lane, actually coming out of the jug handle, blocks the jug handle, but we'll see that queue around that reduce, that during the period, they have more queue, more storage, you might see ongoing congestion in that jug handle.
I don't know.
That's why we've created the storage.
I don't, I don't see it. The jug handle isn't that much bigger than the one that's there. I can see it.
It's actually one of the... You're taking, you're taking a storage area that is very restricted, constrained to less than 400 people, and we're creating storage areas that are close to 1,000 people back out of that. The jug needs a substantially increased change of segmentation. And as I said, combined, that's designed for numbers that would be the higher size of development and does not, not disallow or remove the traffic that's currently flowing through Spirit that we want in service to this purpose.
And also, a similar problem exists when you wanna leave the complex and to go southbound. You only have one exit to get back onto Highway 35. So the traffic, like, I'm assuming the traffic, traffic's gonna back way up because of... So, the traffic, like, I'm assuming the traffic, traffic is going to back way up because of the Wegmans, all the residents, all the residents, all the people who live back at Kings Highway, I mean, I, do you, do you project a long backup? And if so, how far?
So, to clarify, to head back to southbound, Route thirty-five, if you're incorrect, is now going to be out.
Not.
You have the traffic supplement Woodland, there's a southbound that has a left turn lane, a right turn lane, a right turn lane, which operates at the low level service, so that is one way to return to the south, and then the other way is at the Twinbrooks. And again, the location of the northbound nearside Juggernaut that we are constructing has been set to make sure that the queues do not pass that Juggernaut or block that Juggernaut, that's why we pulled it back. We actually pulled it back a lot further than we, than we needed to, but we did pull it back into the site so that we were clear, that we were going to have enough capacity here, so that when that cycle goes green, that queue is stacked up properly in three lanes and clears out. And our analysis is showing that cycle by cycle, that approach will clear.
And you don't think there's going to be problems with, and this next question, is there, is there a, a street coming out right here? This is going to be in a, a four way.
No.
Now, is there a street there?
So, no way.
Okay. Is further up?
Is, is north side to the, to east, something in the center.
And you don't predict, you don't predict a problem here?
No.
With stop signs emitting left turn.
Not at all.
Does the increase in traffic on Kings Highway East take into consideration those, the numbers that you gave us as to, you know, which almost double, the, the increase in traffic on Kings Highway East is going to double? Does that take into consideration all of the development, the residents, the residential units, and the, and the commercial units?
Yes.
And the parking, that's not it?
Yes.
Did you ever consider that, I mean, you said lots of, you take different ways with the signage? I, I suspect that anybody new to, anybody new to the complex may miss that Juggernaut. And I, my guess is that if they miss it, they probably won't go all the way to Applebrook, they would turn around in the shopping center or use Woodland Drive. Was that ever considered, that, that people who miss the Juggernaut will use alternate routes to get back to?
It is, it is a possibility that if somebody misses it, they're going to find another way, given the advent of planes and navigation, yeah, it's possible to keep around the shopping center.
I think it'll happen often.
I would disagree with that statement, I think in most parts, obviously, in the shopping center, we would, we'd agree with it and we'd rather get back.
My final comment is, this is just going to be a traffic lane there, and I heard you're going to hit thirty-five, maybe a parking.
Yes. On panic, thirty-six foot drive. First, I just want to show, there was a comment about, if you Google Mass or something, somebody that's probably attending this meeting tonight said that they came from the train station and to do for back, and sent this to me last year, and they pretty much said, pretty much took them through a screw drive around to the other side of the highway, just saying now, this was a little bit of a draw, right? So, I just thought it was interesting. One of the first things I want to mention here, I'm going to try to stand over here so everybody can see what I'm doing.
You pour, you can leave it to the staff, just pour it closer, right?
Sure. Right now, and it's funny, I didn't know about this until someone pointed it out to me the other day, when you leave the Circus Liquor, most people don't come across, it's not, there's not a direct cross into the Twinbrooks neighborhood.
That's where.
It's an unusual intersection.
It is now, it is.
Right, it's very bizarre, and I never, in the twenty years that I've been here, have ever thought to come across, go into the Juggernaut and turn in there, it's that bizarre. And a couple, just a couple people told me that blew my mind, we had a whole argument about it until I went and looked at it, which was crazy.
And it was designed to do that.
Right, which I think, for me, being as a person that lives in that neighborhood, I think it's fantastic, because you do not get a lot of people coming in that way. So, my point is, you're now directing a direct flow of traffic from your mall into an existing neighborhood, but yet you really don't have traffic data for that neighborhood with a connection to a cut-through, and you only have one southbound Juggernaut for this mall. So, I tried to look at your data, it looked like, I mean, you can look it up, but it looked like there was five to eight cars at peak hours that used this common approach that you have here now, this existing approach, which would go in here and make that left turn, only five to eight at peak, and it looked like there is so much more that's going to come in there now. But then, when it came in, it just disappeared. So, one of the things that's a concern to us, and you have many people here tonight living this, there's a lot of streets back there, it's quite a large neighborhood, is that you're looking at intersections that are down Route thirty-five and Pine Street, and they're going to be backed up because Chapel Hill isn't going to work well, which is what we've seen, and I understand that DOT is going to look at it, and Pine Street's not going to work well, it's going to be, you know, maybe triple the time there, whatever. What about this? This neighborhood is directly connected, nobody has really looked at it, there's no significant data, Mr. Keating has dated in a two thousand and seventeen review letter that was critical and should be looked at, test twenty was supposed to be provided, it was never provided, nobody has looked at it. And it's so critical, because people, the police travel down there every day, and I'm happy the police are there, it's great, protects the neighborhood, but if, once people realize, you could say it's a minute longer, but people like to move, they don't like to be stuck, they don't like to be stressed out, there's an island over here that's going to have two new businesses on it, nobody's going to want to ride over there. So, what I'm saying to you is, in many of the reports I've seen for this entire project, everything is based off an existing condition. The existing condition you have here deters traffic from coming in, and you have no, no other way of getting into this neighborhood, or it's just right here. So, a lot of people have spoken about it, and I think it's key, and I think it's something to be addressed. I mean, right now, why is it okay to exit into this community? Why is that acceptable when it's not an existing condition now?
So, there's multiple parts to that question. I understand your perception, I disagree that it hasn't been evaluated before, but I understand. I dispel your report of thinking that we're tripling delays at intersections and only thirty-five car and creating congestion that is going to result in people utilizing residential streets and residential neighborhoods that are low speed and longer in, in nature. There is no evidence in today's volumes of any cut-through traffic or activity through that neighborhood. We had the Woodland Drive intersection, which also the wide access back to the neighborhood, or the Twinbrooks Road down in the intersection. The infrastructure that we're developing will make it more convenient to get to the tornado center, it'll probably make it more convenient for you to enter and exit your neighborhood, but no way, any of the numbers I've seen, any of the analysis of the car, do I believe or think as transportation professional for thirty-five years, that we are encouraging or inducing any material movement of traffic through that neighborhood, which is longer, slower, residential character. So, other than the people that live in the neighborhood, other than the people that might want to take the flyer to the neighborhood, because sometimes people do do that to pick around, and do that, it is not a correct route, it is not a major, a main piece of the, the, the national circulation system that we encourage traffic on the centers we use. I disagree that we have not looked at it, in fact, I think the infrastructure we're building is specifically built to make sure that the thirty-five cars function in the normal frontage, and that we're tracking, really tracking safely and properly and efficiently.
I hear what you're saying, I respect it, but for a project that has a half-mile frontage on Route thirty-five with one Juggernaut access, it seems a little absurd. I don't know about the Wegmans you looked at in Woodbridge, but I'm not sure how long that mall was or how much access they had, but this is your only major access here. If you have Tyndale Road, and I'm sorry, Kings Highway in front of the town hall, and a renovated town hall, and you have people eating lunch that are employees at the town hall now going back and forth all day long to the Wegmans, you have that to consider. And then, in fact, you have possible backup on Kings Highway East, heading toward Tyndale Road or heading toward Route thirty-five, coming off Red Hill Road, off the Parkway, head to the Wegmans, coming down, backing that up, probably blocking the first entrance to town hall, so people are going to say, oh, forget this, just cut down screws and go. I'm not just saying just that street, there's the whole neighborhood back there, you've got Woodley, and also, over here, what if you do have a lot of cut-through traffic? People will back up here and block this, because now they're all coming this way. So, you will have backup here coming through the neighborhood, and I'm not sure you accounted for that, because if you really didn't study it, and I don't see it in any of the data, where is that traffic lining up? Is it sitting back here, is it blocking this, is it sitting in front of some of these homes here? It's something that I think everybody needs to consider. That's just one intersection I have to consider.
Again, the record has been considered as part of a major study that's done as part of DOT application, as I respect, probably the backup, I respect, it's one of the basic municipal, I understand your perception, the reality is, that is not what the analysis shows, and that is not what the notes concur, and this infrastructure has been designed, criticized, to handle lines, to move the traffic, and have the site. We're not here tonight saying if we're building a shopping center, there's no impact, existing intersection is fine. We're here tonight saying we're building a substantial amount of infrastructure on a state highway that's been neglected by the state requirement of transportation for many years, and put private funding into something that probably should have been for a little while ago. We're doing that, not for the township, we're doing it to obviously accommodate this development, but the residual impacts of that is it is improving the situation and correcting a lot of substantial issues that the developer is not seeing.
What happens when this, if and when this intersection doesn't hold the load?
We can go, we can go into tons of if and whens, and I've done that through, I understand those questions, the if and whens, and the reasons, I understand, you live here every day. What I can tell you is that as a traffic professional, I've designed many sites, I've designed a lot of infrastructure. We get it wrong. I appreciate the chairman's comment regarding the requirement of transportation, I have a big question. They are very useful, they are very challenging, you do not take a project with a requirement of transportation like this without being twisted, turned by fifteen different groups down there that are asking the same questions five different ways and being tested. This project, five years to get to the requirement of transportation, it's probably the most problematic that I can have with requirement of transportation. It has been vetted and very comfortable, these improvements, it is going to work. Our numbers can actually turn out to be relatively conservative, so if other growth does occur in the area, it will be accommodating of that, but certainly it's going to accommodate the traffic.
Mr. Mannings, can I, can I interrupt and ask a question, I think you've got a rough statistic before, and I don't think we'll hear about that later, but I'm sure you've read it, do you have a reaction response to this comment about jumping a post-development survey after we reach seventy-five percent of NRCC?
I, I have no objection to that, but I think that's my client's call, I mean, to say, we agree to that, it's forced, but, you know, I've done both activities, and then, you know, if there's something that requires including on the ground, it's safe, then, then that's fine.
I think, I think that the board goes beyond just creating the traffic, I think we're talking a little bit to kind of where Mr. Mannings, how I was just kind of where we're sitting today, Tyndale Road, this intersection. More in there, I mean, he's going to testify to that, I'm sure, but I think that that's, there's a lot more influence in there, I'm just changing topics.
That's, you know, that's kept your angle on the next episode, but I mean, it's not a new thing to do with the study, I've seen the issue, you can do that.
I did want to mention, did you, you mentioned that your three hundred and eighty thousand square feet is equivalent to covering the possible Wegmans, because there's forty-eight thousand square foot difference, and you felt between that and some other things, I can't remember if it was eternal capture or some other things that you've done, you felt that that forty-eight thousand square feet was enough to cover all Wegmans, because your, your approach was a little conservative, is that what you said?
No, that's not my testimony, my testimony is the numbers we projected and utilized for this study, we built the three hundred and eighty thousand square foot, seven people Wegmans in it, I believe my numbers are correct, what I explained to the board is, that you're not building the American thousand square feet and only three hundred and forty-two thousand square feet, we actually really have some cushion here with regard to the numbers that are projected, on the order of between that and existing traffic generated by the liquor store, something between a hundred and fifty, from a traditional peak hour, and that's a full design problem, when we do both market, we should be somewhere in that whole.
So, the difference is like a forty-eight thousand square foot store, or a facility, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Could be, could be close to that, I think it does have.
Okay, but the Wegmans are asking for a hundred and forty-one extra parking spaces, correct?
They have a design standard that they, they use throughout their, for their development application.
Right, that's the norm for them.
Yeah, because, you know, they know, they know their operation, they have longer states, just a map, and they require, so we tend to say...
Right, I understand that. And you claimed that you had, between this forty-eight thousand square feet, you feel that covers other developments on Route thirty-five that have been approved or in work right now, along with the possible Wegmans, because you...
No, that's not what I testified.
Okay, so please explain.
Again, as I just re-stated, as I testified to, we designed for three hundred and eighty thousand square foot shopping center, the Wegmans are three hundred and eighty thousand, our numbers are correct. However, since the center is being built at smaller size, and since we didn't account for existing generation, I'm advising the board that there is a margin of, of safety in this, so the speed though, if it's been on a fifty to two hundred feet, whether or not that accommodates other traffic, or whether this applicant elects to come back at some time, and then, then we provide some of the, that, that the site decides, we'll, we'll do that, we're permitted for, but, you know, it's basically information to the board as to what the reality is, what we designed for versus what we're actually building.
So, you're saying the, the applicant can come back at a later date if they take away some parking spaces and create a forty-eight thousand square foot building?
Only, only if they can do it for zoning and remodel plan, I don't know if we can dispute it, but we're permitted to do three hundred and eighty thousand square feet.
Okay, I have a list of developments on Route thirty-five that are pretty new, and they're not including relocated some developments, and it comes out to about, I think, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet of new development that's in work right now or that has been approved, and that to me seems like quite a lot, and I'm just curious, you mentioned you did not include that, those?
We incorporated general growth to represent the growth of the roadway system, that's based upon an analysis of the requirement of what developments due to a car, so it's inclusive of normal growth patterns in, in specific projects, so that's incorporated. And as I've indicated, what's very interesting is that the volume we use for this are actually higher, there's been some annual trend, a little thirty-five, so our volumes, so our volumes are, 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 and then, and then, and then, and then.
Well, there's, what's interesting is, there's, that's just the retail, but if you include the Taylor Lane and the Visiting Nurse Association, which is turning into residential, so it's one end of thirty-five and then the other end of Middletown, those people could be shopping at your mall.
And they would be in our minds, we, certainly, and that's where we go to what I was saying before, some of the traffic being generated by the heritage of Middletown, we developed a project that was approved earlier this night, is far by twenty-eight percent, thirty-eight percent coming from the north to this site, so someplace halfway in between, what they, in their traffic space, they're now bound to go shopping, there's the traffic that generated for this site coming in, it's the same traffic, so it's accounted for in that, in that matter.
Okay, and what about like the Rabotees, the Wahoo, all those like the Mo's and the Two Corn Center stores, you know, the CPS, and Chase, all these new places?
The whole part of the, the normal growth, any, or, or, any, or, or, and have impacts associated with the, the, the same process we need to improve, provide any litigation that's necessitated by their development.
Well, some of them are not nearly as large, so that's the issue, but some of them, like the New Duncan or, or things, you know, general... But some of them, like the New Duncan, or things, you know, generating a lot of traffic. So you have to consider that. The Garden Center Island has two stores smack in the middle, right in front of your project, so that's definitely a concern. I know that the New Month Road is going to be impacted as well. There are other streets that are pretty close by that I'm not sure were looked at. And that particular road on Kings Highway is definitely a scary road. So I just wanted to mention that, that a hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet of, sorry, square feet of the retail alone is quite extensive, and that doesn't include those two big giant residential communities. So I'm not sure, I mean, I know there's some growth in here, but I think that's a lot of traffic coming, all right? I'm just pointing that out.
I appreciate your thoughts. Again, each and every one of those sites will have their own impact analysis. Some of the owners pretty much pull their traffic from the existing traffic flow. They all have different characteristics. The road does accommodate, and this project, this study, intersection, as I testified to the P A D named Farming Road in the left half of Mike Street in the south, completing on the road. And all that data was shared with the former transportation.
You, in all fairness, only care is about the movement of Route 35, not the roads.
That actually is not correct anymore. When the access code was developed, that was somewhat of a correct statement about the side streets to degrade. But the former transportation, as a result of feedback over the years as revised the access code, and they hold the side streets to the same standards that they hold the main line. So within their jurisdiction, they are no longer penalizing side street approaches. Side streets created the same depredations and utilization as the main line. There was a time, that wasn't the case, but that has since changed. And this application can process under the code that you're all certain.
How does this code protect this matter?
It protects the matter by, I mean, making sure that we meet the standards and don't see the depredations they commit at the major actions.
But they, they don't know who the depredations do actually be.
They don't.
No, definitely don't. Nor do you, nor do I, and there may not be any, but nobody can predict that. You've been in this business thirty-seven years. Have you been being the ballpark, which you can't predict.
I don't mean to be argumentative, but I am a transportation professional. Our studies are, they are based on a lot of thinking, a lot of modeling, a lot of models, of what kind of type street it is. Yes, it is ballpark, as I said, but ballpark is tight, and it is very representative of the issues. So, you know, in my experience, projects such as this and these improvements that we've identified here are very responsible in packages, sort of, addressing the impacts of the site. And we'll accommodate the traffic, I am very confident, these improvements will accommodate the traffic. And I've built a lot of large projects in the state, a lot of major infrastructures in the state. And I can't think of one project yet that is not made correct, that is not, or basically, based upon the same method I always, uh.
We're in the disagree.
Great question. Because your study encompasses the tollbrothers traffic in your study, I know we might get to it later in tollbrothers meeting, but there's no A M P down analysis here, and you're going to have a journey to work from that development, coming down here, cutting through our development, to go to the train and the Parkway, because it's easy. You're making it easy for them, it's just a direct flow.
Versus Tindall Road.
Yes, versus Tindall Road. So you have, you have this direct connection, it comes right out through Spruce, Brandyline, all those streets in there. There's many ways to do it. And there's like, it's a very directional route. So there's no traffic downstairs for all of those three hundred and fifty units, plus all the existing people that live up there that want an easy route to get across.
The A M analysis on this basically wasn't done because the fact of the matter was it was designed for the highest school. It was opinionful, sad, and if this infrastructure would be there in the morning, and the shopping center isn't active, it provided capacities that are substantially increased during those periods. Again, I understand your assertion that people got stuck in the neighborhood. I disagree with that. Would that route, that route will remain the major highway, Kings Highway. It is a, you're wrong, it is a long way from that residential neighborhood at a reduced speed. It is long for length, it is long for time, and I disagree that that's going to be.
We disagree. You have to understand, at seven AM, you have tons of buses, okay, picking up the kids. And they stall the traffic, and everybody's slow, and they get annoyed. And I do it every day, I drive my kids to the high school, and I'm always stuck behind the bus, and always yelling at my kids because they're never ready. So I know I'm always behind the bus. So I swear, I'm not making this up, but if you go down King Highway at seven o'clock in the morning, there's tons of traffic, and everyone is behind the bus. And then it just keeps going until you hit every school at the time. So what you're talking about here is three hundred and fifty residences with more than one driver per resident, plus all those people living back there, with a direct route in the morning. So with the school traffic, with people going to work, and it is definitely crazy. So, I mean, you could go take a look at it if you don't believe me, but I think it's just something to consider. So the fact that the A M wasn't done, I think is, you know, something that should have been done. So one side note, in our neighborhood, we have no sidewalks in some of these areas that can act. So it's kind of dangerous. On Spruce Drive, it's beautiful, it's a narrow street, and we like it narrow. I'm just hurt some of the traffic because it is narrow. But again, with the bus stop, I think all, I don't know if she went home, she mentioned it. I have the same issue, I had a bus stop also, because it was too dangerous. With the tree canopy, so you might have that issue on King's Highway East. The tree canopy darkens the road, so it's not so easy to see in there as well, because of the tree canopy, when it's all full of bloom, and you have to consider that as well. That's something else I want to mention. Okay. And you have mentioned that it will take one cycle every time to get through the Twin Brooks Jug Handle, is that correct?
The queues won't clear it around cycle by cycle basis.
Okay. Okay, I wanted to mention Chapel Hill Road for a minute. Can you explain to me which lane is the failure lane at Chapel Hill Road because of the project?
The heavy traffic movement is the north half of Route 35, several ports. It's very heavy flow in that position, that load of service, and that reflects the side streets, particularly the last, well, get up to the down of Route 35. Those are the whole part of reality, hey, this is a good application, a lot of traffic.
So with your project, you're going to have residents driving from behind the Whole Foods, cutting down Chapel Hill Road to use the Parkway South that way, per se. You're going to have people from Oak Hill Road and Lynn Croft coming into your project, making a left out of the Whole Foods, and going to your project that way, correct? Because that's how Lynn Croft is going to get there if they don't come in our direction. There's only two ways to go, or they can go way down Route 35.
Yeah, Oak Hill, right, yeah.
So Oak Hill Road, nowadays, if I take and Jug Handle at Oak Hill Road and try to make a left to the Whole Foods, a lot of times it's backed up past the Jug Handle now, and we can't get to any businesses in that area, even across the street over there. So what do you anticipate as a backup here, from the data, which is quite bad for this intersection in terms of a couple of lanes?
In terms of the net impact on that intersection, it's really probably not much change. The overall condition, a lot of the surface of intersections didn't change. With the queue analysis, no such condition becomes suspect because the equation break down, a lot of it break down. Capturing that additional traffic that were in our typical approaches is, you know, what you're seeing today, you see, it's not, it's not a total breakdown of the system. It's just an additive, some key approaches, queues might go a little longer, some deep deris, but you can see, you can see the same types of delays that you see right.
But if that Jug Handle that we need to get to the Whole Foods, if we're coming southbound, is backed up, are people going to take Pine Street? Is that why Pine Street is now considered somewhat of a delay?
No, Pine Street actually is just a, Pine Street has tons of capacity. You know, when people converge to Pine Street, you know, as I've indicated, people can find different ways, so some traffic happening that. This project is not breaking the back of that intersection, it's not creating the issue. Certainly, the exit traffic, fully with its, you know, experience that's there today, which is difficult, it's in here, it's not a, it's not an easy intersection, hopefully, to solve. We have some suggestions for it, hopefully, they'll make it to, I think, a little.
So they're just not going to do it at all, and it becomes.
Until they can really address it in the bigger picture. You know, I think they just won't time, you know, have measure, you know, sees being a solution to really address it in the future.
So if an intersection or a couple of lanes in an intersection fail, and the rest of the intersection is an L O S C, is that something that just because a couple of the lanes fail means that nobody has to address it, and there's no mitigation going to happen there? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
No, the former thing's to be considered, you know, mitigation of a particular project that's being disrupted, it's going to bear share consequences for the system. You know, I think they recognize that there's some trends of that intersection, you know, but, you know, it's more like a couple of band-aid, or how to figure out to do it right at some point at the time. And that's going to take a bigger project, it's going to take a capital improvement project, whatever, the town will, I mean, the state will have to come in, probably, acquire some and do it right, and modify that intersection, it's going to be a capital decision.
Has there any thought been given to the Town Hall project, and how that's going to affect traffic with your project?
Well, the Town Hall project will have to look through the same permitting process with the state that we want to, if there's any access on the change in access to the highway. So as they move through that process, they will need to address the traffic, the traffic impacts associated with that, and some of the risks that are pretty heavy, that are going to change.
I noticed that there was possible conditions where Sleepy Hollow Road and Normandy Road have pretty much traffic over in those areas. There's an intersection right there now at the railroad tracks where there's a traffic light. Have you seen that traffic light? How bizarre that traffic light is? That whole light looks at earrings red, and the other one's a earring green. I was kind of wondering if that would get fixed in all this? Because if you have two hundred more cars, or double the amount of traffic on King's Highway East, because you're having people that might not normally come here, they're not coming for a wagman, they heard about it, they're miles and miles away, and they never sat at that crazy intersection? I mean, that's extremely dangerous, has anybody considered that? It's nothing. I heard earlier about Roundabout, I was quite excited about that.
That's been, that's been okay for four years already.
Yeah, we taught our daughter how to drive, and the light just don't go over there, whatever you're doing. And that's kind of how I feel about that traffic light, so have you seen this lane, Jan?
I haven't, we've studied it, it's incorporated in the study, that's part of the whole application. We're proposing some changes to that efficient.
Okay, so there's no mitigation or anything for this, the Wee Hall or Normandy Road?
No, they just operate through the local service, so hopefully, they change.
If any of the, a couple of times it's been mentioned that six months down the road, or whatever, some people get everything, is there some of these roads that are a little bit more off-site that would be able to be looked at for changes in timing and anything like that? Is someone going to follow up? And whose responsibility is it?
In terms of a post market for traffic study, that's usually restricted to immediate environment providers, jacklers clients, we would not be probably able to count on that traffic study. I've never seen a situation where that's done. I'd more than award, I think, if that can be, be shown on the ballot, we are permitted to use. Traffic is allowed to contribute to the roadway system. There are no standards that were violating all roadways systems, or easing the passage. Yes, we are easing the traffic, I understand that concern. But aside from ensuring the numbers and the safety of our access, no, we would not go back and re-study other assumptions.
Have you looked at any other wagmans projects, or is that just that one project?
In terms of just getting those clients for financial purposes, that's, that's the only reason to have.
Now, you see, the study I've seen is a two thousand sixteen study that had two thousand fourteen and two thousand thirteen data, and the Toll Brothers study is the one with the new data, is that correct?
That's right. And actually, I think the Toll Brothers, we actually used, maybe we used the two thousand thirteen data because it was still somewhat higher than the current data.
How long is it going to take people to walk across here from this pedestrian walkway across 35?
Well, it's designed to accommodate somebody to walk in at thirty-four and five feet per second. I don't know how, some people walk faster, some people walk slower. He is, that's generally considered.
Is it going to be given considerable amount of time?
Yes, it needs all requirements in terms of national standards for how to assess.
Okay, so.
Based upon the crossing distance, it incorporates the start time, push the button, start walking, it incorporates the clearance time, when you're glashing, and beyond that, there's also the, in the secondary clearance, so that's all incorporated in the calculations that are done.
And Mr. Davis mentioned that that could delay traffic, is that in the normal cycle that you would see, like it's something in front of Tindall Road here?
Yes, it's, it's, they're pretty much in the same space. For instance, Brooklyn already has the push button system, the crosswalk system. Some of this, some is already incorporated into the single system of Route 35 hard. It's different, it's nothing new, we're not creating something new, it's not an old brand intersection.
I think that's all I have right now, just until the other, the other side. I'm sorry, what?
I was just going to ask you a few questions. We have reached, pulled it out right here. More people out there still have questions. Or we have that assumption, how many people are still looking to ask questions? We also, in between that, everyone in this room that's not out there, hasn't been the bad.
I'm hearing. The nine o'clock period, it never came.
The other problem we have, we have not heard, well, beyond Mr. Pankis here, you have what else? You have ducking us. But we want Mr. Pankis here to, uh, act. Does his stuff. That's not happening, man. It's something I have to get. So, uh, and just checking the area, the next bell, the day is August seventh. The character.
The outro bar, we're meeting in July, what are we doing? It's not the next meeting in June, that's where we count. So you're going to go July, or August. And there are five things, four things scheduled for July. I mean, that means rearranging all those. I'll be there at work, but it's not time.
No.
Is there a chance?
No, no. We're trying to ask for the duty special meetings.
I've got two questions. One, can we finish the public portion of the meeting? If there really does to approach that, the purpose of continuity, that would make sense. And I'm painting that out for 11:20. The second, which will be probably better than mine, whether the number of years is front of the books. And should here, is there a special meeting ever happening, do we really expect there to be?
Not a special meeting? No. The five special meetings are working this year. And we have foreign issues with the vacation, et cetera, continuity and all those kinds of things. We have not special meetings. They're working, sort of, reviewing, still set there.
But I'm happy for her, she has July, she's not going to July, I mean, just going to get her a word from myself as well.
Right.
Is the July what's?
July 10th.
Oh, July, the, the meeting, the next July meeting is July 10th. It's on July 1st. Are there two people out here or more? Don't be afraid. How many people want to ask or are going to ask questions? I see three, four, I see four.
I see a bathroom. Nothing else.
General choice of the people. All right, here's what we're going to do. 11:23, everybody in that meeting by 11:30. Drive along after the last question, whatever. And then I can push that.
They want this, they want this being revealed, so of course, they're there.
I'm more than willing to be here.
I'm obviously watching, I'm not going to exceed, I know, I'm going to, I'm going to see that celebration out of style.
Think about it, it wasn't there.
All the people, the people, the people.
Yeah.
She already went to lunch, she already.
Hi, my name is Oliver Chazza, I live in 169 East Island. And I'm looking at, I'm very confused about all these different traffic studies. So tonight are we going to be addressing the neighborhoods, primarily the neighborhoods that are to this side of 35? Has your traffic study, um, looked at the impact that's going to happen on King's Highway and Red Hill Road?
We, we had studied that in the past, as part of our application, it started with, I think it's most currently addressed right now in the STAN TECH report. We did analyze it, so I'm not referring to more current analysis, that intersection is incorporated in the STAN TECH report.
So with the STAN TECH report, we will be, we'll have an opportunity to ask questions about that in our meeting?
Yes.
Great. Um, I, I'm just, okay, then my questions are more in keeping with what's going on with STAN TECH report. Because there's been a whole bunch of changes that have happened on King's Highway. That have really impacted all the residents that are living there. And what it seems like, what I'm looking at here, I, I...
Make no mistake, we weren't there.
Okay, yeah, look, I do have a question. You had mentioned, um, that you have done a lot of traffic modeling and analysis, you're, did you do a traffic simulation?
The, uh, there is simulation modeling, I will intend to use that to a great extent because it's still questionable in terms of its, what it does. Uh, but the simulation models have been the basis of it. The human theories and the analysis, the modeling, the, yeah, the Lexing Road analysis that we do. So, uh, it's the same models, it just tries to take it, replicate it, the cars are going down.
Is that available for the public, do you? Because I think that a lot of concern that's going on in this house, this is all going to back up. And if there was a tool, something people could all see, I think we would have, I was just wondering.
And then have more important analysis of all the, you know, the line, uh, analysis that creates the simulation models. The simulation models themselves, quite frankly, they have its usefulness, but they're still an uncertainty. Anyways, there's a lot of things that influence them. Uh, they have algorithms that are trying to model complex behaviors of people. A lot of it has to do with interest, so we don't use them to a great extent in terms of the results of them. But the end of, but they are, but they have a basis in the line analysis, which is used by the department ourselves. Uh, in value impacts and uses of them.
Jerry Good, 29, Eric Schrein. Uh, the technology DOJ gives us is, how current is that? Have they been available?
It's current.
Like a redesign frequently or?
Yeah, I mean, they, they keep their design manual up to date. Uh, the database that they use for traffic projections is the same database we use, which is updated on a regular, relatively regular basis, in terms of transportation, so they tend to be our best.
And are these, uh, models, are they minimum, uh, maximum, somewhere in between, you know, when they...
Uh, it's not a minimum or max, it's a, it's a projection, it's a projection as to what we anticipate the conditions to be. Uh, so it's, it's not a minimum standard or maximums. We do the traffic analysis, preparing an actual projection, this is what we think it's going to be, this is what it's going to be to accommodate. Design standards, uh, which are different, have minimums and sometimes maximums. But the minimums are basically safe condition. That, that would be the design, not the analysis.
Is there, uh, in, in, have their, their conditions, is there, uh, you know, if they're wrong, you know, so does it, do they decide like 20% leeway or do they try to add those?
It's, again, it's, the projection is a projection, so, yeah, there is no, you're comparing traffic analysis, you don't do a factor of safety or anything. They're making the projection, that's what you use for the analysis purposes, so there is no, that's it.
Long way away, but, uh, it seems to me that there's technology to store traffic circles. You know, you may, you may jug hand it bigger, you may, the other thing, it looks like the technology that's widened roads, put more cars in, in the queue, if you will, is that what the technology that you use to give the cars the condition on the 35?
So accommodate mine, you need two things. You need lanes, you need lanes to be able to accommodate the flow. And then you need the operational components almost controlled by a traffic signal. So, uh, you know, creating the lanes that are needed, the distances that are needed. With regard to the traffic signal, uh, they are, current traffic signals are rather, uh, steady. They're more reactive to traffic flow and so forth, the protections are better these days. So, uh, you know, it will actually create some level of more efficient operations as they will, including more current technology.
Will the, uh, we can store all these cars, because they clear of each cycle of the...
We are anticipating based upon the level of service operations and our observations that queues will clear, which is one of the reasons why you want to set up these queues, so that you're actually loading the approaches properly so that, you know, when it gets to the green, you know, you have the fully loaded lanes and you can move through the, the safety, the operational, uh, signals. So, level service C operations, the operations are generally, uh, you did it with the signal that's clearing on a cycle by cycle basis. When you start to make that lowest levels of service E, we're talking about definitions of, uh, some cycle levels. What that means is you might be coming up with a signal, it's green, but you're just on the main, it's a, you know, signal through, uh, in the second phase, just in the, it's, uh, a little bit of a priest delay.
So to get all the people out of that queue, you're backing up people on 35.
Now, now you store them on the approach.
Yeah, you store, you storage the people in circles.
Or on the approach itself, the full approach.
But while, while you're clearing the circle, you're backing up traffic at 35.
Correct, there's a queue that occurs on 35, so then 35 goes green, then they go around. Yes, that's how, that's the way a far side jug hand works. So if somebody uses a far side jug, they don't have to travel through an intersection twice. So yes, they make queue twice on the approach to that signal, depending upon at what time they approach the signal in terms of sequence.
So you could, uh, you could be stuck at 35 for two cycles, trying to get through the light. You'd stuck for a couple of cycles in the tube.
As I indicated, these sections projected operate at C levels of service. The main lines are projected to operate at the lowest service, which by definition is cycle by cycle. There is during the few 15 minutes of the peak hour, is there timeframe where that running thing is gonna be potentially slower? Yes, but as more than average conditions out today, you, you know, you're gonna come down that signal today. If you're red, you'll locate when you're on the jug handle and signal red, you know, wait. But that's how a far side jug handle works. It's a little less efficient than in your sort of
So much, you know, this heavy, this is somewhat reminded of the Easton Town Circle that has been designed, redesigned, several many times, it doesn't work. If this doesn't work, how much more can you expand it than we are?
Again, I can't get into if and who is. This is designed to work, you know, our confidence gonna work, it's embedded. You know, what may or may not happen in the future, I can't, in that example. I mean, it's, we're building the development, right away, we're building to the maximum extent possible. So we are, uh, doing the maximum that we can.
So this, this site, this is the maximum?
Based on, based upon the current way of way of strength, yes. If somebody comes into the future and develops the Nino Shopping Center and changes the path, so that it could be a future restructure that, I don't know what that brings in the future. As projects have like cycles and get rebuilt.
At that, at that point, you have to move out of this and work out some other, because there's no more room here.
I don't know, I mean, that's a presumption, I don't think. I don't have a crystal ball. Yeah, I don't have a crystal ball.
There's about four lanes in here now?
There's two lanes in there today, we're expanding it to four lanes.
And as you come around that, you have to merge all these people in all these lanes. There's a lot of crossing lanes down in here.
You're basically coming, coming back away from the Nino Center, or one lane that's there today starts to open up as you approach the jug handle. So you're really only forcing, you're taking over the area. So the jug handle is basically effectively feeding the back of this pool of things, which is pretty efficient.
So you don't expect a backup?
Uh, the only backup would be at the end of the cycle, somebody's coming out of the shopping center. But queuing predominantly, the queue probably because the jug handle is just that.
The sidewalks, are they, I think they're, I don't know, they're like more deep.
Uh, that needs sanding.
It was interesting that the tailor wing, the tailor, I think they were six foot sidewalks.
They're, they're different sidewalks, four feet, four feet, maybe a hundred.
Minutes.
Yeah, we are building two point one miles of on both sides of the road.
The, so it's a minimum standard?
Yes, it's knee-y.
Two people, one person?
Basically, I mean, four foot, four foot is standard size. Most sizes, when you see residential units, where the units are four feet. They're starting again to use six feet, they do commercial areas, storefronts. Uh, or if you build up to the curb, we use, we use six foot, so they have a little separation from traffic, which sometimes they're done with a two foot straight grand.
Now with the movement down to bus stops and things like that, six feet, uh, maybe
Excuse the microphone, please. Can't hear you.
I said, uh, I said, uh, with the movement down to the bus stops and things like that is, uh,
Gotta do better.
Wouldn't there be, uh, more people, uh, wider sidewalks being more appropriate?
No, I think four foot was sufficiently level traffic, foot traffic you may have.
You know, it's, uh, somebody else mentioned that the, you know, the GPSs and things like that that are doing more out there. Have you looked at, if there is congestion, especially if you come out here, able to follow the intersections? Those delays are sometimes what the GPSs prop you into these local neighborhoods. Consider those as, uh, why there would be traffic in these neighborhoods and residential neighborhoods?
Again, the, the infrastructure that we're building, the analysis shows that we are not creating that type of congestion that's going to influence people to go into the neighborhood from a longer distance, longer time. So I do not see ways, programs, and including navigation programs identifying and finding those paths through residential neighborhoods. Be more efficient than the more direct paths on the major roads. And those are designed to do that, so I just don't see it.
Okay, well, I have at least one example. They picked up the train station, I have Uber, who's going south on, uh, 35, and they cut all the way around through all the residential neighborhoods rather than going through all these jug handles back around.
Certainly not all certain time. I don't see why you would spend the time for the end of the day.
Uh, having to change any of the elevations on any of the roads?
Well, two dimensions of what's, uh, back up. No, Kings Highway is a time with existing grade, Kings Lane is a time with existing grade. Just as the transition to, uh, we are, there is a profile change, but we quickly get back to existing grade. So Kings Highway is pretty much as is, and all the other roads are absent.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, you said, um, you've an essay, I live at 114 Kings Highway. I have just a few quick questions, because I know it's all evening, I really have standard questions more than anything else. Um, you had said there was a roadway limit, and what, what roads are there a limit, a weight limit or four?
Sorry, I noted, uh, Kings Highway is currently has a fourth time posting requirement.
Okay, but that's not imposed by you, that's imposed by other
That's there today.
That's there today. So are there any other places where road bearing weight limits would be put into place?
No.
Okay, because on Kings Highway, um, the piece I asked this question is the question that was brought up about people going through neighborhoods. So I'd like to ask, you don't understand this question, but I, the question I have is why would a shop right have its truck or trailers, 18-wheelers go past my house on Kings Highway? From a store that's under 35? Because they do it every day. For that very reason, to avoid making turns and going straight around and then going down on 35. And they do, I know it's crazy. Why do truck or trailers come down on
Where are they coming, 36?
No, on 35, from Middletown, from the Middletown Shop Rides.
Oh, 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 from 35.
And 36, and they're coming on Kings Highway. They're bifurcated, they're not going down to 35. They're crossing over from the back of the 35 store, crossing over onto Kings Highway, going all the way around, and then picking up 35 again. To avoid making those changes and going through all those traffic lights. Yep, that's what they do. More and more of them do that, 18-wheelers. There are also 18-wheelers trying to make the turn at Red Hill Road to get onto Kings Highway. Have you ever seen that happen? It was really funny, you do the, they do the light hole. I'm not kidding.
Who's talking about Red Hill coming down?
Yeah, over the train trust. That train trust will have a weight bearing sign on it, which has gone, and so nobody pays attention to it. That's pretty dangerous. I
Okay, Anthony, then makes the left turn onto Kings Highway, picking up 35?
Or right, depending which way they're trying to go. Either way, it's not good, because an 18-wheeler, no, yeah. So that's, those are the questions. The, the thing that you're proposing is all your models are showing that people aren't doing that. I'm talking about real life. Come to my, come one morning, have coffee with me, 7:00 AM, and I'll show you for real what it looks like. Not laboratory, real life, every single day. So that's the question.
The, the essay is, I didn't testify, uh, that the models are simply just in track, those trucks are doing that when you, the radar is just tracked. I testified to the fact that does have a fourth time posting. If it's not being forced, that's a different issue, but that's a, uh, force issue is police department. Uh, that's something you wanna take up with, with counsel.
Yeah, well, that's four time on Kings Highway East, I'm talking about Kings Highway in the historic region, which is the underside. The part, the
Why, why they're probably gonna be going there to, to the underside, I can't address that.
I know.
If they're not violating the rules, they have a right to be there.
So my question again becomes, is there any way to put weight bearing limitations on some of these roads that would deter large vehicles from using little neighborhoods to go down?
That's, that's a function of the boundary, but you ask, don't go to non-engineering reasons to study that. Not to, not to exclude a particular class of vehicle.
I know, it's against commercials, I don't know that. But that's, that's the question. If an engineering study would be required in order to help support the traffic, to push people over 35?
No, I mean, not from this group, it's a tough task to do.
I'll be here. Um, the other question I have is, what improvements that you talked about this evening go beyond and require risks? Every improvement that you've said that now this developer has said he would be, he would be making and paying for, but the state hasn't paid for because of the 35 mess that we have. All these improvements that have been said that you're making, are these all required by law in some form or fashion? Or are you doing something extra? Or are these just checkoff boxes? Just wanted to know.
I wouldn't call them checkoff boxes. You know, the connector road is required by the new development plan. Technically, they don't need that to support the traffic with the project. It provides an activity for Kings Lane, because with the township circulation system. So, uh, I think that's, 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 uh, not the need of the project, there's the requirement of the plan. The design parameters in the railways are minimal. To nearside jug handle, I certainly could try to tighten it up there, and bring it closer to 35 on the south end side. But it is designed so that it has a lot of passing and looking at there's no issue with queuing on the approach to 35, and certainly I could probably change the channel, change the order on that. So yeah, make it a, a cost of everything. So, uh, you know, various elements of this will go design to, uh, you know, break through the design standard. There's nothing to be optimized. And should be able aggressively lead to the project, but by accident, that it was so far correcting a lot of problems out here. It's just the nature of design.
Uh, as far as the wagons is concerned, and I, you said you use all the wagons numbers, as you, again, your barometer for this, this recommendation here, and the way this is all laid out, correct?
No.
No.
What I, what I indicated to the board is, I knew the question was coming up. I asked whether the numbers that we did use are representative of other wagons inside the shopping center. So if they did the opportunity, you get something to share with the board, that the data that you did use, the database that is representative, it does incorporate tenants such as a wagon or a shopping center. I told them the values, have that information available? If you have your question, we will, uh, we'll, uh, continue to answer. And, uh, I think the server and the information provided is disposable.
Okay, so I just to clarify, the wagons that are here is the only wagons in this area that will actually be located near the neighborhood. The other wagons are all surrounded by commercial properties and professional properties, either office buildings or one in Woodbridge is right along Route 29 with eight lanes. And one in Ocean Township pours out either onto 35 or Sunset Avenue. Sunset Avenue is a commercial and professional zone, it's all industrial, commercial, there's no housing there whatsoever. The residence, it doesn't go to any residential neighborhoods.
Just for the record, that's incorrect. One in Woodbridge is 12% drive on Main Street, so on Route 9, it has no access from Woodbridge. And it is also available, yes, it is spread on the Woodbridge side, it's supposed to be a close side. There were also residential neighborhoods on the other side of Woodbridge Center Drive. I mean, it's a mixed area, uh, and, uh, not, not, not dissimilar in terms of, uh, gas prices.
When I tried to drive that way, I don't think I was able to cross over Woodbridge Center Drive to get out of there. I had to go straight into a highway. So it was never going into a neighborhood, that's what I think my point was.
And you are in this property, you're connecting directly to the front of Route 35, as neighbors connect to the 130 blocks.
Except people could drive right through across into Woodland Drive and into Twin Rocks. And in those other instances, you can't do that. None of those neighborhoods can you put directly over into the neighborhood, leading you into a highway, right?
Road systems connect to neighborhoods throughout the state, it's very expensive.
When you leave Woodbridge Center Drive, you get across the road and then go into a next one. It don't seem into a highway, it doesn't jump into a neighborhood, you cannot cross into another neighborhood.
That's absolutely correct, as a residential apartment community, right across the street that shares the private.
That was the end of my questions, thank you. DeBisay.
S-A-Y.
Harvey, 43 Alphard Drive.
Um, I just wanna continue on with the discussion about the Woodbridge. That's Woodbridge Wagons, I've been up that way, it's not directly dumping out onto Route 9 or 1. It's on the Woodbridge Drive Road, which unless you are actually aware, but I doubt seriously, if you're in Woodbridge, you can't see it. We necessarily know it's there. And it's, it's not comparable in my mind to what we're talking about here. It's right along a major highway that could be seen from the highway, and the same with down in Ocean. I also find it interesting to compare the square footage of those stores. Are they all the same? Is this one gonna be much bigger? I would think you'd wanna look at that as well, because clearly if it's a bigger square foot store, it might draw more traffic. My comments, and for those that are more familiar with where it's at. Uh, the other question I had was, you mentioned about the grades of the road, and I didn't hear anything about Kings Highway East. There's plenty areas on that road. Is any of that gonna be leveled off at all? Or you're just gonna, is that beyond the scope of where you're planning?
Where we tie in, there's, there's no great change required, it continues on a break for about 1300 feet. I know we're not gonna be requiring a change in Kings Highway, or is there any?
I think when you increase the traffic that's gonna be on there, there's parts of that that are rather narrow and go up and you can't necessarily see, it's not really, it's always been that way, it's not necessarily the safest if you're gonna add even a lot more traffic onto that road. The other question I had is, this, the traffic study you did for Kings Highway East, what was the length, where did you start it from 35, how far up the road did you go? Just to where your connector road is, beyond that, how the whole length of it?
The traffic study was called, this evening addresses to the connector road. As I indicated, I told the others' application, which is a substantial application, we did for the residential intersection of Long and the, and the Avenue.
Okay, then I would like to ask the board, who, who looks at this study for all the local roads that are, that potentially could be impacted by this? You've got a lot of people that could potentially be coming from Highway 36, the Anarbor area, like Paul Moon's at Hospur Avenue. You're gonna have a lot of area of people from that side of the highway and that area of the township that would be interested in coming to wagons, are gonna be using local roads. Kings Highway East is, is a key, a key spot they could come down to get directly to this, this area. Who does the studies of the traffic impact on those local roads?
It's studied.
But you just said you're only to Norman, maybe? Or do these only, this, the, uh, Maple Earl Road? And there's, there's immediate impacts, Sleepy College, Schwartzville, East Road, people going from possibly the ferry?
I don't disagree with you.
Okay, I just wanna mention that and say that needs to be considered. I think that's about all here.
Thank you.
I just want to make, Mr. Pinky's done with his, he's done with his thoughts. He's excused, unless you bring me back. He was careless. He doesn't give any more decimal?
He didn't, he didn't, it's in case of issue, but he's, we're finished.
He's the ref, he's done.
And we're crossing.
So we have, as I understand it, from the Mr. Catherine's presentation. How about questions and deliberations?
All right, we're going to carry this to July 10th meeting. The whole business, who's here first?
Six thirty.
Oh, you're right, you're going to take that. Okay, I believe, yes, the meeting starts at 6:30, we'll get rid of this stuff, and we have one that's short to the moon in front of you, and then.
Thank you.
You have no further notes?
We have no further notes.
Okay, so you want to understand from Gary to July 10th? No further notes, further notes. Correct, correct. All right, we got one, the order, we got one less than here.
You heard that, that four train carriers that we're giving, that's the maximum on the blue, they go for us. I think you have, there's a matter, I can bring them up here, they don't want to bring back.